I just want to make sure people can hear me. I'm not getting a feedback from anybody.
We can hear you.
You're coming in loud and clear, Sean.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's go ahead and get this meeting started. Welcome, everybody here in council chambers and anybody who might be viewing via the Internet through our channel. This is a special city council work session scheduled for Tuesday, May fourteenth at 1:00 P. M. And all work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. We turn some time over to Annie for our call for our pledge of allegiance. No, I'm sorry. Do you need to do a roll call?
We don't have to, but we can if you want.
No, we don't need to. I'm I'm used to seeing that in the agenda items. So if we could all send, I invite us all to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Vice Mayor, would you lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to make note that we are missing Councilor Ward. He is family has some special family in town and is taking care of family visiting with them, so we're glad that he's doing that. And Annie, you said that Councilor Walker is en route? Okay, great. Okay, agenda item number one, fiscal year twenty two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget work session. This will be a two-part meeting over May fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, for council to receive presentations from staff regarding the City of Kingman fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five operating and capital budgets. We'll turn some time over to our city manager, Tim Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate you all coming in, taking the time today to go through our budget. We're happy to present to you the recommended budget for two thousand twenty-five and want to thank all of the staff and especially Tina and her team in bringing this all together. The budget is focused on a lot of the key areas identified by council, both at the retreat that we held in April, but also throughout the year, the different initiatives and important items that council has brought up. The budget comes in at three hundred and thirty-six million with two hundred and eleven million in capital projects. I'm pleased to report that we are presenting a balanced budget. Roughly a third of those costs presented in the budget are operational and focused on continuing our essential services to our customers with an eye towards improved customer service. That being said, there's some exciting things in the budget. There's a lot of exciting projects on the horizon for Kingman. Rancho Santa Fe interchange, the Kingman Crossing interchange, the airport industrial park expansion. All of these projects are exciting and will bring new growth and opportunities for the city. These projects are accounted for and the various aspects of those projects that will be addressed in this next fiscal year are included in the budget. Some of the key priorities we looked at in this as we developed the budget, definitely quality of life is a high priority for the city and for its citizens. And this budget seeks to improve the quality of life for our citizens through investments in infrastructure, both the maintenance and improvements, as well as investments in public safety, along with the betterments in the expansion of our city's trail network and enhancements to recreational facilities. Even more, this budget includes construction of the first phase of the Sun Belt Sports Park located over on the east side of Kingman. It also includes the design of a recreation center. These exciting projects will provide more active opportunities for our citizens. Public outreach is a critical component of any successful government. And with that, a new communications and marketing coordinator has been added to this budget. This position will fill a vital role of informing the public about all that is happening in Kingman. The city has an amazing team. In the few few weeks that I've been here, it's been a pleasure to get to know the team that we have and all of the talents and abilities that they have. They do a great job. They do the myriad of tasks that are required to make the city run, from responding to emergencies, to maintaining our infrastructure, to collecting payments and to facilitating growth. We've got a great team to keep things going. Over the past few years, there's been a number of factors that have affected workforce nationwide. And in order to attract and retain qualified employees, we're having to do different things and think outside of the box. And really, we're having to stay competitive in what we offer. With that, the city has made great strides in this area. I know last year there was a lot of work done towards that in the compensation study and in the restructuring of the public safety wages. And we believe that that has made an impact in looking at our numbers. The our turnover and vacancies have begun to start trending down. There's still still some some room to go there, but they are trending down. But in order to maintain those efforts and keep that going, we are also proposing a three percent cost of living increase for all employees. And we also are continuing with the the step increases for all public safety employees in the step program and then a two percent increase for those not in the step program. Lastly, I would like to thank, as I mentioned as I began, all those that worked hard on this and bringing this together. I'd especially like to recognize Tina and all the hard work she put into putting this together. She brought this budget together while she was filling two demanding roles. So just a huge appreciation and thank you to her for all of that. And with that, I'll turn the time over to her to present the budget.
Well, thank you so much, Tim, but it takes a village, right? So I, before we get started, I certainly want to reach out to my peers in the audience and say thank you so much because I was trying to, well, first of all, there was a lot of transition, right? An interim city manager and then an acting and then a permanent one. And I had the full support of my peers throughout all of it. They recognized the position that we were all in as we were developing the budget. And so I, this couldn't have been done without their support. And so thank you so much. And I definitely want to give a shout out to our budget and finance analyst because she did put in a lot of hard work and hours to make this budget come to fruition as well. So again, it takes a village and I want to be sure that everyone is commended for that. So let's get started. So today's agenda, we will talk about the development of the budget. We will also cover budget highlights, operating budgets and capital projects. Similar, this is a similar format and presentation style is what we normally cover at these sessions. So the budget calendar, so we do start this process. Finance actually starts this process almost as soon as the new fiscal year starts. But the the rest of the team starts the process in November and it really takes all of the months until we get to today, which are the work sessions with the council. As long as there aren't additional work sessions needed, typically we'll take the budget to council for a tentative budget adoption at the beginning of June and then for final budget adoption in at the end of June. And then the budget goes into effect July first. Does everybody have everything they need over there? Okay. Great. So I want to start with talking about the planning and priority setting retreat that was held on April eleventh. The purpose of that was, of course, to plan for the future, talk about priorities, but also to talk about what needs to be included in the budget as far as priorities are concerned. At the end of that meeting, we sent out a report to the council identifying some of the takeaways as well as some of those priorities that we identified. And I want to be sure that you are aware that we heard you and included those budget priorities. So I wanted to walk through a few of those with you so that you are aware. Of course, we know the traffic interchanges are a priority. They continue to be funded in our five-year plan and they are in our five-year plan for the recommended budget. Cleaning up Kingman was also a topic. And so we've added over a hundred thousand dollars to the streets department to address weed abatement, and that's through additional chemicals, temporary labor, equipment, whatever's needed for that program. We've also included twenty thousand dollars in property and and dilapidated buildings cleanup in the development services budget. So those are two areas that are included in the recommended budget. Development services continuing or improving, I guess, customer service and addressing our customers' needs is also included. And that's through some reorganizations, some additional people. And we'll talk about that when we get into looking at the personnel. But I want you to know that we did hear your concerns. And Manager Walsh will talk to that when we when we get to that that part in this presentation. Chief Yeager talked a little bit about ambulance services and how he was recommending that we include a rescue unit in this year's plan. And we heard from the council that that was a priority as well. So that is also included in the in the budget. Fire Station twenty-five, we know that that is a priority. It's been on our five-year plan. But we talked about maybe moving up design and making design a priority. And so I have some good news to share as far as the cost of design go. And when we get to the capital projects, we'll be able to talk to that. But we did include that in the upcoming fiscal year to move forward with design. Sun Belt Sports Park. So we found out from Mr. Mearsman at the retreat that the cost of the park to the capacity that we thought we were going to get anyhow is close to twenty-two million dollars. And we only budgeted about eight million dollars for the park. We heard from the council that you want to move forward with designing or constructing at some point, possibly the entire park, and might be interested in taking that to the voters as part of a general obligation bond. So although it's not in this year's budget, it is in the five-year capital improvement plan and certainly can be evaluated as time goes on, but it is in the current five-year plan. The recreation center was also a topic that we wanted to begin working on, so continues to be a priority for you. But we wanted to move forward with a needs assessment and a design concept report. So we have included that in the fiscal year twenty-five budget and have also moved up design a year as well. City facilities. So I believe it was Councilman Walker that kind of kicked us off talking about city facilities and and how we know that we're bursting at the seams. And although we need to identify a funding source before it can begin being added to the five-year plan, at least we know that it's on our radar. So nothing's included in the budget or in the five-year plan for city facilities. But we also talked about the five nineteen East Beale Street building. So we have a few different options for council to consider this afternoon. And Manager Walsh will talk to those when we get to that part of our capital project presentation. And then community engagement. And Manager Walsh alluded to this in his budget message about adding a communications and marketing coordinator to engage better with the community, inform them, educate them, put videos out and just really manage that process. And we do want to give hats off to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, who has really taken on that role or a portion of that role. She is very happy to to hand that off to someone else if it does get approved for the upcoming budget, though. I think we captured everything for budget priorities and I know that you'll let us know if we did not. So we'll move on to our economic indicators. I always make sure to cover these with you because it is a very important piece of how we in finance identify future revenue sources and where we might be for expenditures, costs of products and whatnot. So I always make sure to cover these. And one of the two most important key factors are inflation and then interest rates in general where they are. It has an effect on the way our consumers spend. It has an effect on what how much products cost. So the Federal Reserve's target inflation rate is two percent. And over the last almost year, we have stayed at about three and a half percent. And so we keep wondering, when are consumers really going to feel the pinch, right? When are we going to start seeing that they're not going to keep spending? And we are starting to see that nationwide, actually. We're starting to see retail sales nationwide start to pull back. Restaurant and bar sales start to pull back. So all of that discretionary spending is starting to happen. And I can say that from the City of Kingman's perspective, we actually started seeing that happen the end of last fiscal year. So we actually have just begun starting to see an incline in some of those areas. Over the last nine months or so, we've seen a decrease. So whether we were ahead of the curve or behind the curve, whatever, however you want to look at it, we're on the uptrend from what we can see anyhow on that. Also, this year I want to point out population growth. And population growth is important because, first of all, it is not only helps increase our tax base. So certainly in those downtimes, as we're increasing population, that helps offset that. But it also puts a strain on the services that we provide. So more public safety, more streets services, water, wastewater. So you'll see here, I thought I would pull the the tri-city area as far as population is concerned. And although there are some nationwide, there are some cities that are not experiencing growth. State of Arizona is and our cities are as well. But I want to tout that Kingman, from a percentage perspective anyhow, is experiencing greater growth. And if you look all the way back for quite a few years, we are experiencing greater growth than what our neighboring communities are. But the good thing is that all three of us are increasing in population. And that's good because, on the next slide, we talk about new building permits. So as we are increasing in population, of course, we can expect that we will be building new homes. So when we look at this chart here, you'll see that in fiscal year twenty-three, we actually had new building permits for single-family homes anyway. That was probably the lowest since almost post-Great Recession. Now, part of that can be attributed to just some of the delay in processes. Part of it can be attributed that we were going through a transition as far as building permits weren't coming to us as quickly either. But we are already surpassing where we where we were for the entire fiscal year today. We are over a hundred and forty permits as of February. So we expect that we will clearly get to over two hundred building permits for fiscal year twenty-four. We also know that we have some big subdivisions coming that are hundreds of homes. And so in the out-years, we're also projecting growth in our building permits. I also want to point out that for commercial building permits, they tend to be, you'll see here on the on the chart, five, five or six in the last few years. That's what we're expecting in the out-years as well. But in the past, last year, the average commercial valuation was under four hundred thousand dollars per permit. This year, it's well over a million dollars. And that's important because those are big projects, right? And we've seen a few big projects throughout the city. It's important because our building permit fees increase when those valuations increase and our construction sales tax will typically increase too. So those are the things that we want to see when we've got commercial growth. And that covers that section and we'll move into the budget highlights. One of the budget highlights, and I don't know if it's so much a highlight or just a reminder or recap, is our fund balance policy. So we do have an adopted fund balance policy for the general fund that is twenty-five to fifty percent of operating expenditures and outgoing transfers. Now, that's the adopted policy. Over the last year, council has provided an informal policy, which is first, it was reduced to thirty-five percent to take care of our streets program that you put into place. And then, as we addressed compensation last year, there was consideration to drop that to thirty percent informally if need be. And so we are watching that. We know over the next five years, by year five in our five-year plan, we get to that thirty percent. So we are aware of your direction on that. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I really want to just continue to commend the council on what you did a few years ago when it came to public safety pension. I really can't thank you enough. When you recognized that we had a large liability on our public safety pension that was eating away at our general fund reserves, we were spending close to five million dollars on pension costs every year and making no dent in that liability or very little dent in the liability. And we recognized that interest rates were well below three percent and it was an opportunity for us to pay down that debt and issue almost thirty-nine million dollars in pension obligations, which you did. And now we are over one hundred percent funded. And the goal is to stay at one hundred percent funded. And we are currently with our debt service and what we are paying into the system now, it's about three point three million dollars. So certainly, again, thank you so much.
Can I say something, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. That is a huge asset and advancement of how we're paying that debt down. So again, thank you to the staff. I commend you.
Thank you, Councilman Savage.
And Tina, and actually all of us, you know, this is a workshop. I mean, it's a work session, so we don't need to have formalities.
Okay.
Yeah, no. And I did want to mention a couple of different things. I did want to recognize all of our department heads are here and I appreciate you all being here. And of course, and our city attorney, Carl Cooper. I was remiss in not doing that earlier and so I apologize. But anyway, once again, this is informal. Don't wait till we recognize if you have a question, blurt it out. So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so looking at our total revenue sources for the fiscal year twenty-five recommended budget, total, meaning every single fund that we have, they total two hundred, almost two hundred and thirty-five million dollars. You'll see on this chart that there at the bottom, there are about five major sources, outside participation. What is outside participation? Those are our developer agreements that we have and the monies that they, anybody outside of what we normally collect, basically contributions and developers who are willing to participate in any of our projects. So almost sixty-nine million dollars there. Then we have some intergovernmental monies. That's mostly grant monies that we budget for. And then, of course, we have our sales tax, state shared revenues and user fees, or what we call on this chart, charges for services. So those are our top five revenue sources for the upcoming budget. I do want to talk about sales tax collections on the next slide. So although we are starting to notice, meaning the City of Kingman is starting to notice an incline once again with retail sales and some of that discretionary spending, we still only expect for growth to be pretty flat in fiscal year twenty-five. So not even a half a percent increase is what we are expecting. In twenty-six, we expect it to be a bit more. And then in the out-years, we think we'll go back to pre-pandemic standardized levels of about four and a half percent. So that's what's included in the sales tax for for those years.
I was wondering if we could get a report in six months and then in a year on the sales tax increase in the downtown area after the streetscape was done. Is that possible?
So it's funny you ask. I actually had one of the directors in the audience ask that same question. And yes, we can definitely put together some some sales tax figures as long as we include all of the downtown area and we don't just call out restaurants or a few different, absolutely.
I would like to see that. I wonder if any of that has to do with this increase because I know a few of the businesses, or well, at least one of the businesses in the first section that opened, they're seeing a sixty percent increase in sales month after month compared to previous years. And they haven't changed their model. They haven't changed anything. The streetscape is the only thing that's changed. So I'm really curious if any of this uptake is due to the streetscape. It sounds like it could be. And then I'd kind of like to track it with those two reports just to see, just to see what our, how our investment's panning out.
Absolutely. So we put out a monthly TPT, monthly collections report that we post on the website. We can add that every six months, just a page on just the downtown area if that works for for the council. So, okay, great. Thank you.
Jamie, thanks for bringing that forward, too. That's that's great news. It really is. And it just, once again, reinforces what we chose as a council because there was still, there was a lot of opposition on it. And we also had intrepidation, a little bit of fear, whether it was going to make an improvement. We hoped it did. Good. Thanks for sharing that.
All right, moving on to state shared revenue distributions. There isn't much of a change, if any, actually, from the January year-to-date recap session that we had. Just know that we do collect four different revenue sources from the state. Three of them go into the general fund and HERF, the highway user revenues, go into the HERF fund and help support the operations of HERF. Okay, moving on to our expenditures. So appropriations, when I show here that we have $335.7 million in appropriations, that is every single expense in every single fund. So this isn't just general fund monies. This is across the board, $335.7 million in expenditures is what we are budgeting in the recommended budget. And although operating budgets are significantly less than that $335 million, they are what supports the city, right? You've got the personnel and the equipment that provide all of those services to the city. And so we always want to highlight what the budgets are for those. I do want to share, and I don't know if it was that department heads felt bad for me that I was serving as the acting city manager or not, but you'll notice there is almost no increase in the operating budget from year to year. So however, you're going to see that there are plenty of things that we're taking care of in the operating budget. So no lack of services by any means. And then, moving on, and thank you for doing, I'm not even telling you, and you're just recognizing. Thank you. So moving on to our capital improvement plan. Now, this is just the fiscal year 25 capital improvement plan as far as what's going to hit the 25 budget. We will look at the full five-year plan at the end of this, towards the end of this presentation. But for fiscal year 25, the total cost is just over $211 million. And you'll see on this pie chart, a majority of it is on the left-hand side for streets. And that's almost $138 million. And most of that is because of the two interchanges. So I just want to be sure that we point that out. And most of those interchanges are being contributed from outside sources as well. So that's important to share. But again, we'll look at all of these capital projects, but that is a component of the $335 million in expenditures. And then I do want to talk about the outgoing transfers in the general fund. It's always a pretty decent amount. And the general fund does support quite a few other, I guess, services and projects and, yeah, services and projects throughout the city. So we are planning, or we're recommending, to transfer just over, or close to $15 million out of the general fund. $6.5 million of that is going to the HERF fund, and that is to support year two of the seven-year streets repair, maintenance, and improvements project. And then $4.7 million is going to the capital projects fund, and that's to fund general capital projects. Just to remind the council, informally, you adopted that all construction sales tax would always go to the capital projects fund. So a portion of that is construction sales tax, not all of it. Some of it is just excess reserves to cover some of the projects. And then $2.7 million is being transferred to pay off the debt service for the pension liability that I talked about a few slides ago. And then there's $1 million that gets transferred to a multitude of other funds. Grant matches, retiree expenses. We also support the transit system. So although the transit system is funded with grants, it's not fully funded with grants. And so the general fund does need to help out for the transit system. Close to $400,000 this year. And then lastly, in the budget highlights section, or actually not lastly, but something that I do want to highlight is the fund balance. I talked earlier that we make sure by year five that we do not go below 30%. And that is exactly what we are projecting, is that in fiscal year 25, we'll be at about 50% in the general fund and then slowly deplete the reserves and transfer them to where they need to be to get to the 30% by year five.
Tina, can I, this seems like a good place to ask you this. Lately, I've seen some shocking comments from somebody that's running for city council. They've been in, there's a letter to the editor, some other comments about the city being deeply in debt and the city running in a deficit. And I think this is a good spot to ask you if you could just put a little explanation point behind the fact that that is not true.
The city is in excellent financial condition. And if I can, because we do have pension obligation bonds outstanding, we are required to go under an annual rating review with a credit rating, S&amp;P and Fitch, actually. We just completed that review. When I shared where we were with fund balance, when I shared where we were with debt, where we were with population and growth, we are still maintaining our AA credit rating. They shared that our financial condition is still strong. So I think that's the excellent nation point that we want to make sure that we educate and inform our public with.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you for everything you do to keep us on the straight and narrow, to keep, you know, keep us from overspending or from finding ourselves in that position where we're operating in a deficit. All the years I've been here, that's never been a part of the discussion. And I really just wanted to stop today and make sure everybody knew that that is not true, that we always put forward a balanced budget and that we're not overspending or in any kind of trouble financially. So, thank you.
And thank you.
Tina, along those lines, I would also like to ask, could you tell us, in your professional opinion, what's a healthy city as far as reserves and when you would start to get concerned?
Yeah, so setting a fund balance policy, and when we're looking at just the general fund, right? And that's what we tend to do. Setting a fund balance, so the recommended fund balance or minimum, I'm not going to even say recommended, the minimum fund balance that the Government Finance Officers Association says is, again, minimum, is two months of operating expenditures and outgoing transfers. And that's if you have multiple revenue sources. Whereas, you know, if you have property tax and you have sales tax, well, we don't, right? And so we always recommend to go higher. So I would say that as long as you're maintaining a minimum of two months, you're okay. But I would say 25% to 50% reserves is a healthy, that is a healthy condition for a city. And we're always above that. And that's something you, as the council, have always felt was very important. Never to get, even when we had those discussions last year, there was the option to go down to 25%, and none of the council wanted to do that, so.
So under 25, you would consider it to be in the danger zone?
To be, yeah. I wouldn't say danger, but I would say, I wouldn't say danger.
It would be concerning.
To be concerned.
Yes.
Correct.
So at 30%, which is where we'll be in five years, right? And currently, we're sitting at?
We'll be at 50% at the end of fiscal year 25.
Yeah, so we're a very healthy city.
We are very healthy.
Thank you for that.
So personnel. So of course, personnel is the biggest component of operating budgets. And so we definitely want to spend a little bit of time about what's recommended in the fiscal year 25 budget. And I don't know if Manager Walsh wants to cover these items?
Thank you, Tina. So in looking at what we need to do in order to stay competitive with our neighboring cities, both Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, and Mojave County, we look to see what they're proposing as part of their budgets for their personnel items. And what we found is, and you'll see it on the screen here, Bullhead City is proposing a 2.5% merit increase along with a 3.2% to 3.5% cost of living adjustment. So a total increase of about 5.7% to 6% increase. Lake Havasu City is proposing a 3.5% increase across the board along with a 3.5% cost of living increase. So a total of 7% increase. And then Mojave County, they have a merit program where they increase 3%. And then they're also adding a 3% cost of living adjustment to that. So in looking at those, and in trying to be, stay, not fall behind, I guess is what I'm trying to say, what we're proposing in this budget is a 3% cost of living increase and then a 2% across the board for those not in the STEP program that was established last year. But for those that are in the STEP program, that they would continue to receive that STEP increase. So that's what's being proposed. I think that covers?
It does cover it. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that that 3% cost of living adjustment is for every pay plan, the STEP plan as well as the open plan. That's all.
I do have a question. As far as the category of merit, is that based on the longevity of the employee?
Councilman Savage, thank you for the question. I can't speak to Bullhead City's merit program. I can speak to the county's merit program. And the way that that works is, in the county, they have an annual review for their employees. And as long as that employee receives a three or better on their employee review, they would then receive that merit increase. So it's, at the county, and this just, they just went to this program, I think, about two years ago. And it was the concern of an across-the-board raise versus doing raises based on merit. And they found value in tying it to those reviews. So that 3% increase for the county is based on a successful personnel evaluation.
And as far as the city, as far as a merit program instead of across-the-board COLA, is that taken into consideration as well?
Councilman Savage, that's a great question. Currently, we do not have a program like that in place. I'm looking at Krista just to make sure I'm accurate in that. Currently, we do not have a program in place. But absolutely, that is something that I will be looking at this coming year. And we will have something along those lines proposed to the council at the next budget.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
So I also wanted, had a question. Bullhead City, Lake Havasu, and the Mojave County all have property taxes. Is that correct?
That is correct. Bullhead City, and I'll let you correct. I know that Mojave County does not have a sales tax. They only have property tax.
Okay.
Bullhead City and Lake Havasu, I believe, have both property tax and sales tax.
Right. So I'm just comparing our budget to their budgets and what we're able to do with our pot that we have to split. They have that additional revenue source.
So Bullhead City does not have a property tax, but they have a fire district. So their fire department is not in.
Yeah, so. It's not like comparing apples to apples. Thank you.
So theoretically, our cost of living should be a little bit cheaper than those cities because of the additional taxes they have. But once again, who knows all those, yeah, there's too many things in motion.
I think we know that our cost of living is lower than Lake Havasu, for sure. So, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add on. Last year, after we completed our compensation and classification study, we were able to provide across-the-board raises because we couldn't do STEP plans for everyone, right? So we were still able to give at least a 2% movement for our employees. When I was explaining that to our consultant, he made a big point of saying we were already losing ground. So, I mean, because last year, again, the raises that were given to other employees, whether it was COLA, or if it was a merit, or a general across-the-board. So we already knew right from the beginning our pay plan was going to suffer just a bit. I mean, I'm not crying poor, but to your point, Vice Mayor, I mean, we aren't apples to apples with other agencies. But again, with our comparators, we knew that we are already, even though we just went out for the study, because we weren't able to pay where we wanted to pay everyone, we were going to lose ground. So that's why I believe Manager Walsh is correct. We don't want to lose further ground. And I think this is a great compromise, that 5% between the COLA and the general raise. I just kind of wanted to bring that up because when you go through a compensation study, you think, okay, everything's fixed. You can't just walk away and pretend like it's going to be good forever, so.
And I may have been misunderstood. I think that what we are doing and what's in the proposed budget is fantastic for the amount of money that we have to be able to spend. So I just, I wanted it to be known publicly that, you know, we don't have these other revenue sources, but we are still going to take care of our people. So I didn't want to be misunderstood.
No, thank you. I understood you perfectly. I just, I guess I wanted to add that other layer is that a lot of times, the public thinks, oh, well, they got big raises in 2012. Well, that was then, and if you don't care for your pay, you know, it does fall behind.
And I do recognize, we were a bit behind in getting that compensation study.
Absolutely.
So I do recognize that we were, we're trying to play catch-up.
Yep, thank you.
And to that point, I just have a question. How long until we're caught up, would you say, as far as these increases year to year? I don't know that we ever will be completely, but.
No, 100%, you won't be because, I mean, it's always going to be that sliding scale because each agency out there is going to be competitive, just like what we're talking about before, for people. And so they're going to try to get as much compensation as you can. So if you have a Havasu with a tax, a double tax base, if you will, they're going to continue. And I just worked with their director the other day, and they were going out for another compensation study. So, you know, they're going to continue to seek where they can.
Okay. Well, and that's fine. As long as we're closing that gap, that's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, on this 2% increase, does that increase the across-the-board, like the minimum, does the minimum pay increase 2%? Or does each person move up in the scale by 2%?
So when we talk COLAs and raises, COLA is what's going to actually change your pay plan.
Okay.
So on the police and fire, on the public safety pay scale, we're doing the 3% COLA. That means it shifts the pay plan and the people on the pay plan.
Okay.
Plus, they get their STEPS. On our general pay plan, the 3% COLA shifts that. But in addition to that 3%, each individual would get that additional recommended.
So they will move up. Because I think it's hard to see if you're always staying at the minimum, even if you're getting those raises, but you're always close to the minimum. It doesn't feel very good, but if you're moving up that.
COLA will change our pay plan.
Okay, that's really good here. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you, Manager Walsh, for covering that. Also, on this page, just quickly want to point out that the recommended budget does include changes to our FTE count, so going from 413.5 to 421.5. It also includes a slight increase in shift pay for our police and for our dispatch center, those that have to operate 24 hours. We give a per-hour increase for, or a slight per-hour kind of stipend for those individuals. And so it's been 80 cents for I don't even know how many years, so many years. And so we felt that it needed to be increased this year to a dollar. It's a small impact of about $70,000 overall. So we felt that the value was worth it, and it is recommended in the budget. So talking about recruitment and retention, I wanted to show a couple of slides here, just some data to show where we were and where we are today. So looking at that voluntary turnover rate, right? Voluntary, meaning you're leaving on your own terms for whatever reason. Wanted to highlight that top table for retention purposes, where we were in fiscal year 23 for our fire station personnel, our police personnel, and then our recruits versus where we are today. And you're going to see, and I believe Chief Cooper shared that with you in his department report just at the last council meeting, too. We are seeing improvement there for retention purposes. The table below it is all divisions, so not just those sectors, but all divisions. And you will see that it is better in fiscal year 24 than it has been for quite a few years. And we are seeing that, not in every single division, right? It is not every division, but in general, we are seeing that decrease. And then that blue box is actually vacancy rates. So recruitment, for recruitment purposes. Looking at the history there, you'll see where we are today, the lowest that we've been in five years for vacancy rates. So it is working, what you did last year.
I really, I really wanted to take a moment for this because this is huge. I mean, to see these numbers from just a year ago, we did some real good here. Because, I mean, I look at the retention, and I look how high those numbers were, and I translate that to the dollars of turnover, you know, especially for police and all that it takes to get them, you know, on the streets. And I just, I see dollar signs in the reduction, which translates to more than we can realize in pay, you know, in the department. So I really, really want the public to know, this is huge. This is really huge. So I'd love to see those retention numbers so low.
And it's not even a year. It's only been, we're not even a year done, right? So it could even get better than that. I mean, that says something.
Yes, I can't wait. Thank you.
I just wanted to kind of ask, on that, Vice Mayor, can I answer my question? That means less training time, less training dollars, and et cetera, right? Okay. And also, what does police voletta mean?
Those are the recruits. That's the. Those are the recruits. That's the academy that the police officers go attend. Yes.
Do you manage shifting that expense from the turnover, say, in police where it's a very big number, to keep, you know, putting three people through the academy and outfitting them? How do you shift that over to pay payroll? Do you or is it all just coming out of the police department? Do you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean.
I'd love to see it like move from here to here.
And it does, right? It doesn't it it doesn't, I guess, formally, right? We don't formally make that shift. But what we see is a reduction in the training costs in their operating budgets. And so then it's kind of just excess reserves that then can be reallocated to pay, if that makes sense, or to something else. But it can be reallocated to that.
Yeah, it's just when we when we made that change, there was a big concern over how that was going to impact the budget for years to come, because it was an expense. And we all hoped but felt confident that it would make up in that reduction in turnover. So I guess that's why I would just love to see that actual number in we we are saving this every year by getting this down to 2%. And now this doesn't have as big of an impact on the overall budget and how we're able to allocate funds to to other departments or to other pay pay groups, you know, it it was a wash. You know what I mean? I think because there's also that feeling of disparity that, oh, police and fire, you know, they got all of this, but maybe we just moved it over. And there's still enough funds to take care of everyone else in all the other departments. You know what I mean?
Absolutely, I know what you mean. And I don't know that we were going to recognize that immediately, right? It wasn't just once, once we provided the pay, the people will come, and now there's no more training. It didn't. It's not going to happen quite like that. But I think in working with Chief and his team, we can maybe put something together every year, maybe as we come to to the budget work sessions or at some point during the year, and maybe share what those realized savings might be.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
And those realized savings, we're going to see in reduction of expenditures out of that department, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I I realize it's not in a pretty graph, but we're going to be able to see it, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add to it, I know this is a budget session, and, you know, we're looking at dollars and cents and that. But I would say even more so than just the the savings on that training cost and all that, the the customer service, the knowledge base that we're able to maintain here, provides a much greater service to our 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 citizens. I keep calling them customers, which they are. But to our citizens, by having, you know, those tenured police department, those police employees, those tenured fire employees that that and, you know, all of our employees, the longer they're here, that institutional knowledge that they have, they know how to how to work, how to how to help our customers, how to help our citizens in getting what they want to do and best serve them. So it definitely, you know, in a budget talk, we want to look at those dollars and cents and how it makes sense. But overall, if we take a step back, those those long-serving employees that that know how things work, they they provide the best service to our customers.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you. All right. So changes to FTE. So a net count, a net increase of eight. But there's there's also some reclasses that we're recommending, some eliminations. So we'll kind of walk through this table and give you the opportunity to ask some additional questions on them. So we've talked about the the city managers' division adding a communications and marketing coordinator. Development Services, I'm actually going to see if Manager Walsh wants to talk a little bit about the reorg that we're doing in Development Services.
In Development Services, we're see if my microphone's on. We'll try that again. Working with Director Rodriguez, we are looking at adding a planner. And then what we're looking at in the building department, currently, our plans or our building inspectors are performing both building inspection and plans examining. So they're in the office and they're out in the field. What I've seen at other agencies is you have a dedicated person to just plans examining. So as those plans come in, they're able to review those. Your inspectors are able to get out into the field more and and get those inspections done as well. So what we're looking at doing is is it shows adding a plans examiner. But if you go down just a little bit, we're also removing a building inspector. So basically, we're reclass, we're removing one position, adding adding a different position. But we're hoping that that change will help improve that efficiency. And then you'll see in there that we're looking at a couple of reclassifications. And what this will do is help restructure the department to provide, you know, a little bit more structure. You have your entry level, you have your senior planner, and then you have a senior building inspector as well. So kind of create that that structure in there to to address the various types of projects that they see. If it's, you know, your typical, you know, inspection, your entry level guy can do that. But if it's more complex, we'll have that expertise to be able to do that as well.
So in this department, with this reorg and and the additional positions, will this decrease the need to go to a third party?
Absolutely. Yes. So.
Do you know by how how much, like what percentage this is going to take the load off of the third parties?
And really, what it'll be is is as we get those positions filled, we'll be able to to pull more and more away from our third party. The third party is always nice to have almost as a relief valve, you know. Ideally, we do all of our reviews and our inspections in-house, and we take care of that ourselves. But, you know, if we get a surge coming in, it's nice to have those those third parties to be able to pass that on so that we can maintain a a quick turnaround time. So.
So does this staff us up enough to make sure that we need them very little unless there's a surge? Is that what you're saying?
That is the intent. And really, with the it's with the building, the building area or the building department, finding the words, right? With with the building department, you'll see it goes, it comes and goes in cycles. So generally, we try and watch for that. And and what I've seen in in other agencies is is we can put our intent on this one is to address our current needs. So we're hoping that this will address that, and we won't need to go out. If demand continues to increase, depending on what that demand looks like, we can add additional inspectors or plans examiners in future years. And what we've done, what I've done in other organizations is condition those new positions based on numbers of permits required or turnaround time. If if, you know, right now, we're holding steady, but in, you know, if we see that we have an additional 50 permits come in on a regular basis, not just a surge, but on a regular basis, then, okay, that that signal the market's going up, and we have that ability to bring that extra person on. So this will get us started in that direction. And then as we as we look at next year's budget, we'll definitely be watching those trends and seeing what we can do.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were more on the proactive
Yes.
side of things rather than the reactive, which we've been reactionary for years and with the growth that we expect to get in the coming years. I want to make sure we're being as aggressive as we can be
Absolutely.
and still fiscally responsible.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So in the fire department, we are adding a firefighter to for their squads. In the Parks Department, we are reclassing one of their groundskeepers to a maintenance technician. That maintenance technician will primarily be working now on irrigation-related items. We did confirm with Mr. Miersman that the grounds would not suffer by doing this. And he did say that there would be no concerns with that. In the police department, we are adding two police officers. We are also reclassing some of their administrative staff to be more in line to where where the court clerks are in our pay plan. They these particular administrative staff do work similar to the court clerks. And so we will be reclassing them to to that level. And then in the fleet services fund, so this is something that this is a this is a change in the level of service that is currently been being provided internally to internal departments. So what we are recommending is to increase our fleet services by an entire shift. So adding a crew leader and two mechanics. By doing that, our fleet department will be operating seven days a week. So there will be they will change their work schedules as well to accommodate for this. We have had the same. So we've had seven employees in the fleet services team. We were looking through this since, well, in the late 1990s, actually, and maybe even sooner, maybe even earlier than that. We did add some, we did add two employees a few years ago to kind of, they were lower skilled sort of repairs that those individuals would take on. But our fleet and our equipment over the last 25 years have greatly increased. And we heard from several departments this year, I don't want to say begging, that's not the right word, but our solid waste department, public safety departments, our water and wastewater, and this is to know, this is nothing about fleet, they just don't have the resources. But those particular departments are feeling the pinch and feeling the pain the most. They've got their heavy trucks, heavy equipment that are down often. And what happens then is that we have to utilize old aged replacement vehicles to put out on the street while we're working on other vehicles. And so we are recommending to to add that that extra shift. That is a cost to the users of the fleet system, and solid waste is the biggest user of that system. Public safety is the second biggest user, and then our water and wastewater systems as well. So there will be a cost increase on those budgets. But as you saw earlier, there is not much of a budget increase overall between our operating budgets. So.
I had a question on that, too. As we are replacing these vehicles, because we're starting to realize them coming through and getting them on a more standard rotation to get newer vehicles, will we start to see, it just makes sense to me, that as we're getting newer vehicles, they're going to need less repairs?
That it that does make sense, right? And it will. But I can tell you, and I know Jack is looking at me, he's probably like wanting to get up and speak to it as well, is that when you look at all of the old vehicles that we still have in our fleet, we have over 500 vehicles in our fleet, vehicles and equipment in our fleet. And although we have started that replacement program, we only started that a few years ago, and it was in pandemic times. So we are still trying to get fiscal year '23 vehicles here, right? So we started that, and we will recognize that. But it is for a long time to come still. It's going to take a long time to replace all those vehicles to where we know every five to seven years, we're going to have new vehicles. So this is a way to get through that as well.
And do you see that being in the next five years, the next 10 years? Like, when will when will the city start to realize that?
So it's an expensive cost. It is. Jack and his team have worked through it, and we're talking millions and millions of dollars to get there. So it's a it's a priority for us, though, as far as recommending to you as a council and sharing with you that. It will save us money in the long run. So Jack and his team have been working on putting together a program to bring to finance and then ultimately bring to the council for consideration. We should have something to you next year. And I don't want to say how many years that will take. I don't know what it looks like. I know it's a big number.
Okay, as long as it's being worked on.
Yes, it is.
Because I I can see where we're going to realize some savings, but it it will take some time, of course. Thank you.
And Tina, you mentioned sanitation and wastewater, both enterprise fund, correct?
Correct.
So is there an accounting for that? They help pay in to help pay for those mechanics?
Yes.
And I would think.
Solid waste pays almost 40% of the fleet budget.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
My question was about the aging trash trucks. And we were going to start replacing those, but then they're hard to find, and you can't replace them. And so now what we're seeing is we're going to need three more people to help hold them together with baling wire and glue over the weekends or whatever. That's concerning to me that we haven't been able to replace them the way we thought we would. And the way this is sort of, I don't know, it's just this problem that we can't seem to get over. We can't get these trucks. And it's now we're talking about rate increases for solid waste. And I, you know, I I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't even know if we want to keep going down this path where, you know, we've we seem to it, the odds are against us to be able to do a good job when we talk about keeping that system running with employees and trucks and all these things. I'm I've been really concerned about what we're going to do. And now we're talking about mostly hiring a whole new crew of mechanics just just to keep those trucks going.
So it's across the board. It's not just solid waste, right? Public safety can can talk to it as well. They shared, hey, we we want to see fleet get that crew that they've been asking for. So with the solid waste trucks, you are correct, we've put orders in, and we've taken to council, right?
Yeah.
To please approve these orders. It's just a matter of getting the trucks here. And I don't know if Jack or Rob maybe have some more information as far as where we are with those truck purchases, because we have another three that we want to order this year as well, or going into fiscal year '25. And I don't know if we're starting to see those trucks have a a shorter build time than a year and a half, which is what we have seen. And I don't know, Jack, if that is the case. Are we seeing that? Or?
They're taking orders right now.
Yeah.
All the all the trucks we have on order right now, we have two that are on delivered. Those have been pushed out over and over again. The last update I got, they're supposed to be here next month. So we'll see if that that lands. Did speak to one of the chassis providers, and they used to put out like 17 trucks a day was their average. And for a while during COVID, that had dropped down to like seven or eight. And they're looking for the next year that they'll only be back up to about 11 is what they're anticipating. And so we're not the only agency fighting this issue. And then we're competing against very large carriers specific to solid waste. When you're talking Republican and waste management and people that come in and order, you know, hundreds of trucks, where we're ordering two or three at a time. So it's it's a nationwide problem.
Well, and Jack, you mentioned, and I was just going to comment, every agency, whether private or government, is suffering from this as far as ordering a new truck.
That's correct.
I mean, yeah, it's not just selective to government, but every agency.
That's correct. And and just to, since I got the mic for just a moment, I just want to highlight, as as Tina was saying, the increase in the fleet personnel isn't specific to solid waste. We did do vehicle equivalency evaluation on our fleet, and that helps you dictate or or determine the number of staff you need to operate your fleet based on the composition and the numbers. And right now, we're pretty much staffed just to handle solid waste based on their fleet. And you're correct, as time goes on, the number of hours spent on units will get better. But usually, you put add-ons in at VEU. So one VEU for a truck when it's, you know, five years old is going to be two VEUs when that truck's 10, 15 years old. And so we did not put add-ins in that. Hopefully, we're chasing the bell curve. And rather than add a bunch of people and realize we're overstaffed, we would be chasing that on the backside until the fleet age came down to the point that our staffing levels met, rather than hire a bunch of people and realize that we got more than we need.
Maybe I had something, please?
Go ahead, Sean.
Oh, okay, I'm there. I've had a lot of comments from constituents concerned in chip seals. And having to explain to them that we didn't have the proper equipment to pick up the rocks, I don't know if there's a way we can get that message out. I don't know where the status is of the chassis that we need to get that gravel remover, or so to speak. Where are we at with that, Jack?
So I that is one positive we have. I had brought a sweeper to you guys, and we were supposed to see that like the first half of '25, calendar year '25. And another agency had backed out. And so that new sweeper is actually in operation and has been for the last couple of months. So.
That's great. That's great news. That's great news. I'm seeing an improvement out there. And I'm sure our citizens are. So keep up the good work, buddy.
Thank you very much.
Tina, can I ask, we had discussed at one point that a procurement officer would help with efficiency and sourcing and just taking time hours off of our department heads so they don't have to deal with it? Is that still something that's being worked on? Or?
Did Carl grab you before the beginning of this meeting? Just kidding. We've actually talked about it internally. And it isn't a decision, it's a big decision to add procurement and change the way departments are managing procurement. And so I think every one of us want to address procurement, but it's not a decision to be made rash. And so we weren't ready to just say, hey, we want to hire a procurement officer, and we'll figure out how to do it later. In talking with Manager Walsh, we're going to look at that this year, come up with a good plan to bring to the council. good plan to bring um to the council for next year. Yes. All right, so that's fleet. Um, street operations, so we are recommending to reclass two of their more um entry level operations and maintenance specialists to foreman. In the powerhouse fund um for tourism, they will be expanding their hours, actually they may have already expanded their hours. And so we are recommending to add a full-time customer service rep. They have no full-time customer service reps. They actually operate all of their customer service with part-time people. And um, they have more product, they have more visitors, we're back to um basically those pre-pandemic levels. And because of the increased merchandise sales and bed tax collections, they are able to pay for this themselves. It is not going to be a drain on the general fund at all, so we are recommending to add that F T E for them uh to manage that, to manage the um additional hours.
It, with this um additional person, would they be able to expand their hours past 5:00 PM? Because I saw they're talking about going from 8 to 5. And I noticed that uh sometimes when I'm in the powerhouse for meetings in the evening, they're, the parking lot is still full, people are still trying to get in. And I know it's 4 o'clock, I think now.
So I think 6 o'clock is where they're going to for summer hours. They're extending them to 6. Am I right on that Bennett?
No. You're right.
Yep, summer hours are till 6 o'clock, 8 to 6.
Okay, so, so there is some leeway with this person to be later in the summer and then as it gets quieter, if it doesn't get quieter.
Would that be great?
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, let's see, in the wastewater fund and the water um operating fund, so for wastewater and water operations, there are a few reclasses there and they're uh similar as far as what we're trying to do here. So um, these, these water technicians and these wastewater collection technicians um have certifications to manage the system. In the wastewater system right now, we have um oper, we have what we call operators and those operators have these certifications. They are classed at a higher level than technicians, um, and they're in line with the market. Um, and so what we're asking is since these technician, all of these other technicians have those same similar certifications, we feel that it's important that they also be recognized and be paid what the market pays for certified operators. And so we're asking to reclass the wastewater collection technicians and the water technicians to those operator positions. And then also in the water operating fund in the engineering division, if you recall last year, um, the council asked us to add a civil engineer to the engineering department that would really handle development services type of work. Well, in working with manager Walsh and Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Garmin, um, we felt that we don't need that civil engineer in development services, we're readdress, we're addressing it a different way. And so uh, Mr. Garmin has said, I don't need just a civil engineer in the engineering department. And so um, he has approved um removing that position, so we're, we are recommending to do that as well.
Can I ask a quick question, just for clarity? Um, you answered most of my questions, but um, is it safe to assume there's also a one and a two wastewater collection operator?
There is, so we are recommending fours and threes because that's what's required to operate our systems. Sometimes if our cert, if our operators don't have a certificate, like a level three certificate, we will, we will, what we do is we underfill the position with a, with a, with a two, a level two person, so it won't cost us as much. But in case we end up losing that person and needing to recruit, we want to recruit a three. And so that's the position that um becomes a, is that, am I not answering?
Which way does a scale go? Is four more experienced than one?
Four is the highest.
Okay.
Sorry about that, yes. Four is the highest.
I wanted to ask about the positions that we had added last year, um, to see if those have all been filled or if they um are out, um, if they're, if they're posted, like the um airport and industrial park leasing coordinator, um, I think we're all interested about the street maintenance crews, the water resource manager, and I think we call, I can't remember what we called the two police employees, but they were like cadets or something?
Cadets.
Do you want?
Yeah, on the police cadets, I think we're still waiting for in the department to refocus since we were so far behind on police officer. I don't think the department's actually come up with a job description for the, I think that's a, those are part-time positions if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
On the uh water resource, what was that, what's the official water, water resource manager? We worked with um director Owen, we are re, are, we're reclassifying that to a different level position. It's going to be, I believe it's a coordinator position. We've identified the candidate, we've had interviews, um, we're just trying to work out the, the offer. So we're, we're really close on that. We did fill the um street maintenance positions, all those were filled very much immediately. We've had turnover in some of the street positions, but those were filled. And then what was the other one?
Airport.
The airport leasing coordinator, yes, that has also been uh identified and filled.
Okay. So it's just the police and you almost have the water resource person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving on to benefits and retirement plans, as far as any changes to those, uh, there are no increases to our health insurance um premiums this year, so there's nothing to pass on to our employees or absorb. There's a slight increase to life insurance premiums, a total of $1,500 citywide. We are recommending to absorb that cost and not pass that on to our employees. And then retirement plans, depending on which one that we, uh, our employees are in, they'll, you'll either notice a slight increase or a slight decrease. Um, overall, it's not a large impact either, so we're lucky there as well.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Life insurance, is that percentage to every employer or just an average cost to the city?
That is an average cost to the city.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the operating budget portion of um the work session. And um, like I, like I shared earlier, the format doesn't change. So each slide has the page that the actual operating budget information is on. And um, and then a few pages before the page I have identified provides all of the information about the department, so F T Es, mission, goals, accomplishments. So we'll just start at the beginning and start with city council. Um, overall, the city council's operating budget increases by about 13%. This is primarily related to adding um one of the council members to have insurance, full insurance benefits. We've also added some additional conferences um for council to attend. We noticed that there was some, um, some appetite for that this year and wanted to be sure that anyone who wanted to attend a conference could certainly do so, that it wasn't a budget constraint. So we've um increased travel and training for uh council as well. Moving on to the city manager budget, there's an overall decrease of 8.3%. Part of that is eliminating the assistant city manager position from uh their budget. We did replace um that position with a communications and marketing coordinator, but the cost difference between the two are um significant. And there really aren't any very, any other significant changes in working with manager Walsh. He felt that everything in the budget we identified last year seemed pretty good going forward.
I did have a question on that. Does that also um reflect any training and certification uh education that he's going to?
It does, it includes all of the ICMA courses as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I wanted to ask. As well as, I'm sorry. As well as the mentor?
Yes, includes.
Okay, great, thank you.
I wanted to ask um if these, these goals that are on here, uh, are these your goals? Were you able to have time to put these in here or did somebody make these up for you?
Full transparency, had a lot of assistance with those goals.
I, I think it'd be nice um to work with you, you know, once you get settled a little bit and to, to set some um.
Actual goals, you bet.
I wanted, I was looking for a really, these are really nice goals, but you know, I think, I think you could do better.
In the interest of getting this done, we, we put some boilerplate goals in there, but no, definitely there's, there are better goals that will be made.
Thank you.
So we'll be working with him as a council? Yes? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want to set your goals. Maybe we could have a, an executive session and, and kind of go through and, and just set some new ones for him.
Absolutely.
All right, moving on to the city attorney's budget. So there is a very slight increase in his operating budget. Um, there's personnel and all of the personnel budgets have all of the um recommended increases um to them, so that's part of it, part of the increases. And then of course, there are always benefit election changes, depending on turnover, depending on if people opt in to our insurance or opt out. So those are always changes as well. But overall, they don't have much of an increase, right? Um, the one thing that we are trying to do citywide is any of those large subscription, software subscription services, we've been working to try to get them out of the operating budgets, individual operating budgets and move them to IT. A lot of times, there's more than just one division that benefits from those subscription services. And so we want to be sure that we allocate the use of those services accordingly and to do that is to get it into IT. So you'll notice there is some of that as we look through some of the changes in the budgets, operating budgets this year.
I wanted to thank you for goal number three.
I was like, what did I put?
Remember, did you do your own goal?
Yeah, yes. Sorry.
I knew you probably slept since then.
Yeah, I was falling asleep. But uh, yes, I am attempting to, these goals are goals that I created obviously for the office, they're not personal city, Carl Cooper city attorney goals.
Right, but.
Yeah.
But I, I liked to see that goal in there about being efficient on criminal cases.
Yeah, we're trying to, we, I think we do a pretty good job moving those along as best we can. We're getting a little overworked, but that's okay. We can get through it.
All right, moving on to the city clerk's budget. She does have an increase of over 26%, but almost all of that increase is related to the election that's coming up, so. Court, let's see if we made it here for judge, no, we did not make it for judge, okay. Uh, the court budget does have an increase as well of 14%. Theirs is primarily related to jail costs, so, and I believe um the judge shared some of the, uh, some, some of that in his report also at the last council meeting, but jail costs go up every year, the county assesses, you know, the cost recovery, so they assess higher costs to the cities uh that use them. And then also the judge is just experiencing people in jail longer or returned visits, right? So um, there's an increase, an uptick there.
Yes. Question for you.
Oh, he's.
On the 26% increase over the election, does that include the primary and the general election?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and so then looking at development services, so they have actually just a slight increase of 4.2%. We already talked about the people part of, of their budget. Um, they do, they are, they do have some changes to their supplies and services budget. We did have almost $100,000 budgeted this year for the general plan consultant. Most of that money will be spent this year and we don't need to carry much of it over into next year, so that's one of the reasons for a decrease. And then they no longer have the building and life safety inspectors in their budget, those are in the fire budget. So all of the programs related to them are no longer in this budget, so that's the decrease in supplies and services. Yes, councilwoman?
We had talked about setting some uh official policy and procedures for this department. And I remember a few years ago, was it your department went through that? We had, we had to hire an outside consultant to sort of put that policy and procedure book in place. I'm wondering if there's funds in this year's budget to do something like that or if it's too early, um, because we don't have a director yet, we don't have him exactly set up.
So I don't want to talk to the operations of the division, that'll be manager Walsh, but I do want to share as far as what we did in finance. So we did end up hiring someone to start to help us. And it, we ended up taking that on ourselves because everything is just so, it's so, it's so specific for each division and so we ended up taking time ourselves and spent quite a bit of time doing it, but we felt it was more beneficial. I don't know from the planning perspective what that looks like.
It's very time consuming to write those, so.
It was. Yeah, yes.
Thank you, yeah. Um, I, I would suggest that one, we'll get the, the director in place, work with them. A lot of the uh, the policies and procedures that you'll see in development services are typically set by your uh, your zoning ordinance, your building ordinance, those really set, you know, here's the rules that we follow. Um, so a lot of it can be encapsulated in that. I, I think a lot of the, maybe some of the policies and procedures you're referring to is almost timelines on, okay, we received it, we need to get it out in this kind of timeframe. And we can definitely set those internally, uh, working with that.
Okay, yeah, um, I was looking for something, right, so if somebody, you get someone new, they, they have a book and they know exactly, okay, it comes to me, then it goes to this person, or I have so many days to do this and I have to move it on. But I was also um really hoping we could put something in place that eliminates um the ability to add your personality to how you do the job, just because I have seen this um get better, then we start having trouble again, get better. And it, it's, it's really based on the people that you have in that department. Um, if you have wonderful people in there, you know, things go really well, if you get somebody, I don't know, you know, I, I'd like to eliminate some of that so that we could just get on a, a baseline and they always get the same quality service.
And that is, that's exactly where we want to be with that. Um, a lot of it is really in the recruiting and, and who you hire and, and then really in a lot of, you know, maintaining that as well. Um, it, it doesn't take long for the wheels to fall off, you know, we can get things going, moving, going everything right and one bad apple will, will, will cause a problem there. But a lot of it is, is really, um, and, and I think Mike's done a great job on, on, on addressing a lot of the issues that we saw previously. Um, but it is, it's just that continual improvement, looking for, you know, changing, really creating that culture of, you know, we're here to help, we want to help you achieve your goals, help you get to where you want to go, um, using the, the codes to get them there rather than to, to be obstructionist.
Yes, absolutely.
But yeah, no, we'll look at, um, and like I say, a lot of it's culture, but, but definitely there's policies that we can put in place, you know, basically stating those, those objectives and those goals of, we're here to help, we're here to, to help you get where you want to be, so.
Well, I'd like to see them given some autonomy.
Yes.
Within that department to use some common sense and it's not always black and white. So find some common ground and some give and take, so.
Definitely. No, no, and, and that's exactly, and one thing that I've seen with it is um, they're, the more education, the more training that they, that they get, um, a lot of times I know, uh, working with developers and builders, they're, they get concerned about that. Now, don't send them off to conferences, they come back with all sorts of new stuff to hit us with. Um, but what I've seen, my experience has been is, is the more training and education that they get, they're able to find those alternative solutions. They're able, it's not just the black and white, oh, right here, code says you can't do this, rather they can look at it and say, this is where you want to go. Code says you can't go this way, but there are these other options through the code to get you there. So um, definitely education and training, um, helping them see, you know, the big picture with it helps with that. So yeah, having, having that knowledge and then letting them go through and, and help them is the way to go, absolutely. Tina, can I also give, real quick, is develop, are development fees in this department?
They are, well, they do assess them, but development fees are in separate funds. They are not part of the revenue.
So on page 88, they are not, that 530,000 somewhat odd dollars are not in this graph?
They are not, they are building permit fees.
Okay.
Is what is included in what you're seeing.
Okay, thank you. They are managed by this department?
They are managed by that department and overseen by the finance department. Um, okay, so economic development moving on. So slight increase to the economic development budget and I wish there was something I could share on it, but they really kept everything pretty much business as usual, so appraisals, some consultants, um, they didn't ask for any new people, so I don't, there aren't, there aren't any significant changes in this particular department.
I um noticed um the goals and I didn't see any uh pertaining to retail, increasing retail or retail attraction. Um, that's not my position to give people goals, but I would really like to see economic development um adopt some kind of um goal for retail for all years going forward.
We can make that happen.
Is there anything in here that kind of accommodates the fruition of the land release from the FAA? Is that kind of worked into these numbers? If it, like, if it happens, or are these numbers based on, the projections based off of it not happening?
So projections for fiscal year '25, we are not planning on it happening. We don't have any numbers for fiscal year '25 for it happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We do have a very small amount in the airport and industrial park budget for the appraisal of all of that land when it does get released, if that's the direction that we go. We have that in the event that that happens, but nothing else.
And my follow-up question was just going to be, if that does get released, is there going to be a world of expenses to pay because now we're responsible for that land, whether it's cleanup appraisal to sell, that has profit on the end of it, hopefully, but maintenance costs?
So again, we didn't budget for anything large, and I can't imagine anything that's going to take millions of dollars is going to happen overnight. It certainly is going to take planning, and that was the reasoning for that. We, in the event that that happens, we do have ample appropriations throughout the budget to be able to pull from and absorb and pay for, though. Okay, moving on to tourism. So in the tourism, for the Powerhouse Fund, we have the tourism division, and when we purchased 519 East Beale Street, we kind of added a separate division in order to track costs for that particular building, too. So in the Powerhouse Fund, we've got the tourism budget, which is that top table, and the electric vehicle museum is what we've currently calling that particular building and that budget. So the tourism budget has an increase of 14.3%. Almost all of that has to do with the people. So in addition to adding an FTE, we are also, because we have expanded hours, that FTE can't work every single day, every day of the week, all of the hours, we are also adding some part-time hours to cover, to cover that as well. And then we also, we've got a slight decrease in supplies and services. That's actually on the next page, as far as explanations go, supplies and services. So although there's a decrease, there are some pretty good increases in there as well that are offset by decreases. As I shared earlier, the, they are selling inventory and product just, I mean, hand over fist, and so the inventory costs have increased pretty significantly. But we did move the community art program out of their supplies and services budget down to capital, so that was part of the offset of the, of the, to that, to that increase. And also, there were some one-time purchases that were included in this year's budget that don't need to be included in the upcoming budget, so that's part of that reason. And then as far as the capital outlay, I will call out all of the capital outlay, and each of the budgets, important for you to know where we're spending those dollars. So for the Powerhouse, we are including the installation of a mini split heat pump unit for the visitor center coordinator. If you've ever been in that building in the middle of summer, it's almost unbearable, and so we want her to stay with us, and we're, we want her to be comfortable. So we're planning on doing that. And then also, planning to add a dog park in front of the Powerhouse by where the Tesla chargers are, a muffler man, and a 12-foot shield to be placed at Locomotive Park as kind of a photo opportunity. So that's some of the capital outlay in, in the Powerhouse. Okay. Moving on to engineering. So engineering has a decrease in their budget, which is related somewhat to that civil engineer position being eliminated, and also having to do with some one-time expenses. So this year, we budgeted for a utility regulations update to hire a consultant to help with that. Manpower resources didn't allow us to do that. Manpower and resources, we don't believe are going to allow us to do it next year either, so we've pulled that out of the operating budget and are hoping to do that in fiscal year '26. That's the biggest change to that budget. And there is no capital outlay. In the finance department, there is a 4% overall increase. There was a reclass to the finance director, to a deputy city manager, finance director for personnel, that's something that we didn't cover earlier, it was addressed when Mr. Miller was here. And then in supplies and services, there's a decrease, and that is really related to, we've got some excellent, the interest rates right now are high, and so our banking fees actually get offset with earnings credits, and so our bank fees are lower. And we are utilizing TPT, sales tax auditor, instead of hiring them on the full year, which is what we've done for probably the last five or six years. We are identifying delinquent taxpayers and then just reaching out to that auditor. It's going to save us probably $30,000 a year and felt that that was more beneficial, so. Utility billing and licensing, a decrease in their operating budget, and not much to speak to, just really a reduction in merchant card fees is really where that reduction is coming into play. For the fire department, they have an increase of 13.6%. We've talked about most of the personnel changes. I do want to share that we have increased the number of paramedic firefighters from 27 to 33, so, which is something that the fire chief shared, that we don't normally have that problem of having too many paramedics, so it's a good thing to have all of them, and we're certainly willing to increase the budget to pay for them. Supplies and services, so now they have those building and life safety inspectors under them, so we had to move those inspectors to their division, as well as all of the programs and related costs associated with them, too. They also have some one-time supplies and services purchases in their supplies and services budget that you'll see, included some furniture for Fire Station 2, a communication site system assessment. As far as their capital outlays concerned, they will be, they are hoping to purchase a new extractor, an ice machine, some handheld radios, heavy rescue equipment, some Lucas devices, and then 12, replacing 12 cardiac monitors as well.
I had a quick question about these budgets.
Yep.
I know that there was a grant that was providing ADAs around public buildings, not public, but like other nonprofits around the city. Are those types of things in these budgets?
So like the AEDs, you mean, those AEDs? Yeah. They are not, they are in our grant budget is where those, those types of items are.
So those numbers aren't in any of these, thank you.
They are not, you're welcome. Now, any sort of replacements to them, that would be the fire department, but any grant purchased items are in the grant budget. Moving on to the dispatch center, so again, we've talked about the pay for dispatch center. They are recognizing a 2.4% increase overall, and they added a Motorola, they have a Motorola computer-aided dispatch program that they utilize, and so they added a module this year, and it is going to require annual maintenance, so there's an increase to their supplies and services for that, and there is no capital outlay. In our HR department, they have a 2.7% decrease, and most of that is, again, moving one of the subscription softwares into IT's budget, and then also moving the service award program to, to a fund that will allocate the costs to all of the divisions instead of just the human resources department. That's that award program that we have where if you serve five, if an employee serves five years, they get a dollar amount, if they serve 10 years, they get a dollar amount. So we just moved all of the monies out of Krista's budget to accommodate for that. Moving on to risk management, that budget is also down 2.2%, and there are no major changes to this, to this budget overall, especially from a dollar perspective. IT's budget, so it sounds like we've been moving a lot of things into their budget, right? But they're actually only recognizing almost no increase at all, there is a slight decrease, actually. Part of that has to do with a reduction in one-time setup fees for the procurement and contract management platform that we purchased this year. One increase that I want to make sure you're aware of that will be ongoing is that we are migrating to Microsoft Office 365, that's $100,000 a year that we'll have to pay in subscription fees going forward, so that's something that is included in the IT's budget as an improvement. They do have capital outlay, they've got servers and computers and all of their network hardware that they end up replacing on an annual basis, and they also are paying for the camera system replacement capital project out of their operating budget. Recreation, a slight decrease as well, not much to talk about in the recreation department, there just are no significant changes. And there is no capital outlay. Yes.
A quick question. I was kind of waiting for Parks to kind of discuss a hypothetical, just so I know. I know that they have the $100,000 for the feasibility study, right? And then in financial year '26, it mentions $950,015,000 in '28. Let's say the feasibility study goes through, but the project is pretty much scrapped. I'm a big fan of the project, don't get me wrong. I'm just wondering how this works and learning as I go. So what happens to that $15 million if that project doesn't come to fruition?
So the $15 million is not cash, we are actually planning to borrow money for that. Yes, I see where you're going with that, so you did, Councilmember Eric and I had a little bit of a training session yesterday on the, on the budget, so he definitely, and his learning, thank you very much. But no, the $15 million is actually going to be borrowed money, so it's not actually cash that's sitting in here, so it would go away, and there would be no debt service tied to it in future years, is how that would work.
So can I move forward one step and ask about the $950,000?
So same, right now, we have cash for that, we're going to get reimbursed, but we do have cash for that available right now. If it goes away, then the council will decide how they want to direct those monies to be spent at that time.
And until then, it would be unassigned?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, very welcome. So in the pools department, there is a slight increase, and they do have capital outlay that consists of a pool vacuum and some filtration pump replacements. We will talk about the pool when we get to capital projects as well, but for their operating budget, nothing really changed. Ice mayor's family. All right, moving on to the golf course, there is also a slight increase of 2%. Let's look through here, capital outlay. So they are looking to purchase some Toro irrigation equipment, a replacement blower, a broom attachment, and a replacement trencher. Okay, moving on to parks, there's actually a decrease in parks of 4.7%. Again, not, we've covered all the personnel, no major significant changes. They are asking for two vehicle replacements this year, and they will participate in the five-year financing program that we currently utilize. They do have some capital outlay. They are hoping to purchase a ditch witch, water excavator, a replacement tractor, a replacement tire machine, a replacement motor, mower, rather, and rewiring electrical to the Veterans Memorial Park that was taken out by a semi some months ago, so they're hoping to get that rewired. Moving on to our police department, there is an increase of almost 7%. We've talked about all of the people piece of that. And then as far as supplies and services, there is a very big increase in animal shelter fees. Of course, they have a new building, and we are helping to pay for that. So that is a big chunk of that, of that increase. And then for capital outlay, they are retrofitting, so they had originally, we had talked about purchasing a new vehicle for their evidence technician, and in an effort for them to save money, they've actually offered to retrofit one of the neighborhood services' existing vehicles for that, so will be, it won't be utilized to the capacity that, you know, police vehicles are, so they're willing to do that. All right, so moving into all of our public works departments, we have just the public works administration department that is a 4% increase, and they are asking to add a vehicle to the fleet for, as a pooled vehicle for all of the employees that travel and utilize it for travel, actually just inside the city as well, so asking to add a vehicle for fleet. We also have our streets operations budget that has an increase of about 8%. Overall, this, this budget includes, yes, almost $100,000, or it's actually over $100,000 in weed abatement program that is included in this budget, so you'll see that as part of the supplies and services increase. There are also some one-time expenses for a storm drain inventory, some radios. And then they are asking for two replacement vehicles, and their capital outlay consists of a side spreader, a hydro ax, asphalt spray patcher, asphalt recycler, and a skid steer with an asphalt mill attachment.
Do you happen to know what the budget is for the Clean City Commission?
I want, it's, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's anywhere between $5,000 and $7,000. That's what most of the commission budgets are throughout the city budgets.
And then we had talked about doing neighborhood cleanups. Is that a part of this $100,000, or is that a part of the existing budget?
So, very good question, I don't know if that would come out of solid waste, or, okay. Would it be how much of a, we can look at that, we will, and add, if we need to add costs for those neighborhood city cleanups, we can certainly do so.
I'd like to see at least a neighborhood a quarter, so whatever the cost for four neighborhood cleanups for this year, to see how it goes, and, and I know that we'd also talked about the Clean City Commission being a part of that. So, you know, they're willing to do door hangers to give out the information, make sure it's more successful and help in those ways, so I want to make sure there's plenty of funds to do it, right?
Yep, you got it.
Thank you.
And for the record, the Clean City Commission budget is not in the streets budget, it's in the solid waste budget. Is, it's in the solid waste budget. All right, moving on to our Streets Repairs, Maintenance, and Improvements Program. This is year two of year seven, and so all of the monies that you have talked about spending is budgeted in this budget. This is where we're able to track and see where we've been and where we're going in fiscal year '25, and then when we get to capital, you'll see what that looks like in the out years as well. So there's a decrease this year because last year we had carryover from the prior year, but again, we're still funding it to your objective and to your goal and direction.
On that, we won't have any carryover this.
There will not be any, as a matter of fact, we're trying to find ways to cover the overage, so yes, there will not be any carryover.
Okay, perfect.
Moving on to transit administration, this budget is up about 8.2%. This is primarily related to just internal service allocations overall. We got some conflicting information from the states, the state that oversees this particular budget last year, and then after they performed a review, they went back to the way that we were originally doing it a couple of years ago, so we're really just putting us back to where we were in fiscal year '23, as far as the way that we budget for internal services. So really, just based on ADOT's approved rates. And the same is for transit operations, that budget is up also 13%, a large increase is because of the same reason.
So I had a question on this, is this an appropriate time to start talking about county ridership and possible reimbursement?
Sure.
I really would like us to see how we can work through that. We're servicing, it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, I really would like to know the ridership numbers for the line that goes out in the Butler area. I'd like to know what the ridership is because we're servicing a huge county constituent area, as well as, you know, MCC, in my opinion, we could at least ask that we be put into their budget or some kind of reimbursement to their budget because they, they too are benefiting from the ridership that go to their, their area out there. So I would really like to see what we can do for reimbursement and get some numbers on that.
Most definitely, and I think it's important to share right now that at the retreat, one of the And I think it's important to share right now that at the retreat, one of the items we wanted to bring for discussion, we're unable to, just due to time, was the industrial, adding the industrial park route. And there are some great ridership numbers in Rob's presentation to you on that. And that would probably be a great time for us to evaluate and look at what those costs could be. I know that we had talked about bringing possibly a work session to the council to talk about how you want to address that. I don't know now how manager Walsh wants to handle that. But certainly it'll be coming to council for consideration in some mechanism or some method. And certainly we can talk even in more detail about it at that point.
Okay, perfect. Yes, the industrial park, absolutely, adding that, you know, maybe we can get some public-private partnership monies from the benefit that they're going to gain from us delivering their workforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. I have some concerns about how this program continues to get more and more expensive. It started out, it was just supposed to be transportation to the airport for jobs. And then it's expanded beyond the city limits. And from what I understand, those are the most riders. And so now we have something in the budget this year, another seventy-five thousand dollars for the Transit Center feasibility study. So we just keep expanding it and we're not talking about the cost and who we're serving and... And I have some real concerns about the benefit to our citizens in paying for non-citizens through our sales tax. So I'd almost like to put a pause on any future spending on this feasibility study. Not to take it out of the budget, but to put a pause until we see the presentation and make some decisions about whether or not we want to approach other organizations to help pay for this or if we want to start making some cuts to it. But it can't continue to grow year after year after year because that's just more that our taxpayers are fronting a bill for somebody that doesn't live in the city limits.
Well, maybe that feasibility study, there's some shared costs in there. You know, because that feasibility study, there's a lot that's going to come out of it, so maybe...
Well, this is just to build a new center.
Right, but I'm saying there's, there's going to be, it's multifaceted.
Well, that'd be nice if it was.
It would be nice if we could share in the cost from whoever the beneficiaries are going to be from that transit center.
So just to share, we've already started that study. So that was budgeted this year, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're just carrying, it's still ongoing. So...
Was it more than the hundred and fifty?
It was a hundred and fifty thousand.
But I mean, is this an additional seventy-five or is this just half of?
Half of it, yep. It's not completed yet, so we're just trying to finalize it. But to your point, right? We certainly, I guess, we're happy that we, we definitely need, the county asks us to pay for all of, all of their services, right? So I think it's important that, that we reach out and, and ask the same. And I do want to share that, remember, the transit department is grant funded for the most part, right? Whether it's an eighty-twenty share or a fifty-eight, forty-two share, or sixty-forty share. It is funded by, with grants, but the general fund does supplement it. So, so definitely we can ask for some sharing in those mon, in those costs.
And I appreciate this, this topic being brought up. The mayor and I actually, we and Bennett Bradley had a meeting earlier with the county, just kind of broaching this subject and kind of bringing it to the forefront of, we do have these lines going out into the county and, and, you know, being able to share some of those costs. And, and I will share, you know, at least, I know speaking with, you know, some of the supervisors, there, there was a recognition of, of that service being provided out there. So we'll definitely, we'll put together a more in-depth analysis of what we're providing, what the costs are, what those services provide, and see if we can't come up with some solutions to, to get our arms around that cost.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Just a friendly reminder to speak directly into your mic, they're having a little bit of a hard time hearing sometimes. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to water operations, there is a nine point seven percent increase into, in the water operations budget. So we've talked about the personnel piece. Supplies and services are also increasing. We talked, as we talked about the rate study just last month, electricity, again, bigger demand, population growth, right? There's higher demand on the system. And so the electricity costs this year are several hundred thousand dollars more than what we anticipated. And we're expecting it to be that way in fiscal year '25 too. So that's a big chunk of the increase in supplies and services. We also continue to have leaks and so, you know, connections and all of the equipment for that is included. We also budgeted or are recommending anyhow to add a temporary labor person to help us process delinquencies, to stay more on top of that. And so it's only for half the year, but it is twenty-five thousand dollars that we are including in this budget as well. And then as far as, they also are asking for two replacement vehicles. And for capital outlay purposes, they are sharing in the cost of a forklift with wastewater and solid waste. And it also includes a hydro vac trailer, a replacement backhoe, emergency operations equipment, and fire hydrant replacements. And all of this isn't, is included in the water rate study numbers that were brought to you just last month.
I had a quick question, just on how the bill is split, if it is. Let's say a pipe is being upgraded to accommodate services and the road has to be torn apart to get to the pipe. And then it has to be fixed in the end. Who's paying for the street repair at that point? And does it improve the surrounding areas, like if five feet away, there's a pothole? Does that get fixed in with the job or is it just this little strip they cut out?
So I don't know the technical piece of that as far as the pothole, but I do know that the replacements are being paid with water money. The users pay for that, not the streets department. You're welcome.
I wanted to ask about these street repairs after the water lines are repaired. And I'm expecting that when it starts getting warm, it's already kind of getting warm, but that we'll start seeing more of these leaks again. It seems to happen as soon as the temperature hits a certain point, then there's just leaks all over town. And we're going to be doing all these repairs for maybe a third summer in a row, fourth summer. So I'm wondering about the repairs, and I know this is a big one for Smiley too, he's not here. But there are all these squares cut in the road. And here we are trying to make some headway on our streets. And then there are now all these squares and the filter they put in there, it doesn't last. And then that hole gets deeper and deeper and we're getting so many complaints. Is there money in the water operations budget for those repairs? Can they just hire a company to start doing all of the repairs so that it keeps up? We can't have them sit for months at a time. You know, I feel like everywhere I go now, somebody's telling me about a hole on their street that was from a water repair and it's still there and it's getting worse and worse. And it just doesn't seem like we're making any progress. And I know Smiley, he had asked for a report on it and we don't have a date for when that's coming. But I'd really like to just see us hire this, you know, hire a company and get them all done and then have them ready to go back and do those repairs as, as they occur with the water repair. So that it's not, it's not hanging out there on a to-do list somewhere.
So we do have the monies to pay for those repairs. I would have to ask Mr. Owen to speak into the mic.
Thank you. So we do utilize contractors along with in-house crews for patching. So we've used both Sunland and the local contractor for patching assistance along with our, our in-house pavement preservation crew. We're putting together information for that report. We'll be able to tell you how many we have pending and how many we've completed. And we're working with some operational improvements on the water side. You know, we've purchased compactors for those service crews so that when they backfilling with the AB, they can actually compact it. I think some of, you know, I think we've had issues maybe where we've patched early before it had all dried out and they had shrinkage afterwards. So we're working on, on that side, along with the, on the pavement preservation side to try to improve these processes. And we'll have more information in that report when we bring that to you.
So is there, I guess I just want to be clear, are we talking about changing the way we're doing it so that we can get caught up on all of those? Or are we still going to be looking at having a hundred, a hundred and fifty of them at a time outstanding and trying to catch up it? I mean, can we just hire somebody to do all one hundred and fifty and then every week they patch every hole that was made from those water repairs?
Well, we have done that. We haven't done the complete inventory of them. That's something we can, you know, we can look at. I think once we get this information compiled, that'd be a big help for us laying out the game plan going forward.
So to answer that question, to add to what Rob, Rob had mentioned, we are basically compiling that list of, of all the potholes that we're aware of throughout town and then basically looking at that and definitely will be attacking it if we can get it with a consultant or a contractor to go out and patch them, just to get it, to your point, yeah, to get it caught up. And then that way, because we've gotten behind in it. So getting caught up and then, like you said, I've been seeing the reports and it seems like we've had a number of additional leaks coming up. So yes, we're, we're on it, we're aware of it and we are, it's, it's basically, right now, we're, we're getting that inventory of all these potholes so we can get our arms around it. And then once we have a number of, of, okay, this is where they all are, this is how many we have, we'll be able to put a game plan together on, on how to address that.
And when you say pothole, do you mean all the potholes? Are we just talking about just these cuts from the water repairs?
Well, it would be potholes and utility patches.
So everything?
Utility patches is the, generally, we've got crews out in front of our pavement preservation crews that are getting ready for a chip seal or an overlay and they're, they're doing those patches. And so that's kind of what we've had the contractors out doing, you know, ahead of where we're going to be going in to, to do some pavement treatment.
But what about all the holes that aren't in the district that's being repaired?
And that's, and that's what we've had, another contractor and then our in-house, in-house crews working on those. And so I think we've got some operational things, you know, I know in the streets budget, there's an asphalt recycler that'll be, that'll allow us to, to make our own hot mix, you know, when the local plants aren't producing, you know, at a big, in a bigger volume, we'll, we'll be able to do some of that patching as we go.
Okay, because my concern is, we're going to make another a hundred and fifty holes this year on top of the hundred and fifty that are there. Or that's, I don't know if that's the exact number, that's the last one I heard, right?
Well, I guess the other part of it is, you know, we're doing more service line replacements. You know, typically if we go out and it's, there's already a clamp on the service line, we respond to a leak, we'll schedule that for a replacement. And so we're doing more of those through local contractors too. And so that, hopefully we'll be able to nip some of that in the bud by getting some of these water service lines replaced.
How long do you think it's going to take to get that pipe replaced so that every summer you're not faced with all these repairs?
It's going to take a while. I don't know, I don't have a, a number for you. You know, we have twenty thousand water services in the system. So, you know, and we have a certain number, you know, we have different age groups where we're not having the issue. But then, you know, we have, we have had cases where we got premature failure of pipe that should still be good. You know, it's, you know, it's ten years or less old. And, you know, we, we kind of went through a whole kind of study on what's causing it. And it's, you know, it's a combination of, you know, bad pipe along with, you know, some, you know, I think there's some bad installs, probably both on our side and on the private side. And then I think, you know, with weather and with more movement in soil, with larger amounts of rain when we were getting some of those big storms, you know, you know, if it's getting backfilled with, with, you know, good-sized chunks of rock in the hole and now the soil's moving and it's rubbing and, you know, so, you know, and we are, you know, we're using more water, we are probably pumping, you know, harder than we historically have been. So, yeah, I don't know that there's one answer. I don't think there's one easy answer. I think it's a bunch of small contributing factors that just kind of ended up in this perfect storm of where we're at. So, you know, we're kind of trying to look at it from all angles. And, you know, if we can get those service lines replaced, if we can, you know, improve our process for, you know, doing the repairs and backfilling and getting them patched in a timely manner if we're able to produce more asphalt on a more regular basis rather than relying on the local plants. These are all things, you know, hopefully we can, you know, we can improve the situation, but I don't have, I can't tell you how long that will take.
Okay. That was depressing. Okay. Are we, when we, are we just anticipating now that every summer, we're going to have to hire a company to come and do all those repairs?
I think we're going to need help for a while, yes.
As I'm just wondering if there's, if it should be a crew, in-house crew of people, you know, to save money? Or if there's a way to have a contract where you know they're going to replace this many in a, in a summer? You know, just to, just try to start getting our arms around those costs?
Yeah, and like I said, we've been, we've been trying to, we've been utilizing in-house crews along with contractors.
Both, okay. All right, thank you.
And I do know as part of the water rate study, the water team has been asking for another crew for a couple of years. Considering where we are with the rates, we haven't been able to approve that. But we do have it in the five-year rate study that we brought to you just last month to add another crew. And what they do with that crew, there'll be, I'm sure, all sorts of things, but that will hopefully help as well. So, it is, and it's for next year, that crew. Thanks, Rob. All right, moving on to wastewater. Wastewater is experiencing a five point one percent decrease. And let's see, significant costs, oh, capital outlay is, is the biggest reason for that decrease. So the capital outlay they had in fiscal year '24 was higher than '25. But, but the capital outlay that they are hoping to spend on is a third of the cost of a forklift that is going to be shared with water and solid waste, a wood chipper, a replacement dump truck, a boom truck, thermal sensing and valve operating equipment, and then some minor sewer line extensions as well as SCADA software and hardware improvements. And then moving on to the solid waste budget. So there is an increase in the solid waste budget of over twenty percent. That, there is a component of that that has to do with, if you recall, we are in the process of replacing the large three hundred gallon alley trash cans with individual ninety gallon ones. And so that has taken some time. Eddie, our superintendent of solid waste, is wanting to ramp that program up next year. So there's an increase to those, to that replacement program that's included. And they are also looking now, they'd like to put GPS and cameras in the solid waste trucks to help with accidents, to help with just tracking and monitoring. It also includes a route optimization platform. And so we're looking to include that into the solid waste budget, start that program and initiative next year. Capital outlay for solid waste, our shade structures, a used rear-load refuse truck, and then also participating in that forklift with water and wastewater. And I believe Mr. Owen wants to add.
I just want, I wanted to clarify the earlier discussion about the, adding the four additional cleanups. So I guess my understanding is what we're talking about is taking roll-off containers out into neighborhoods, going out...
containers out into neighborhoods, going out and letting all the neighbors know they're there and what they can throw away and what they're not, I just want to make sure that's, when we come up with the price for that, that's what you had in mind?
Yeah, just like we used to do several years ago where, yeah, you have an area and they have a roll-off dumpster, I was hoping we could do pamphlets though to talk about the pickups, so if you have somebody that cannot get stuff to a dumpster, they know they could call and do the pickup at, you know, around that same time. Yeah, I think, I think just starting there to try to help people get the garbage out of their yards might help with our plans to clean up the town.
Okay, I appreciate it, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So looking at the airport, that budget is down 1.1%. A big reason for that is that we hired a third-party, a third-party kind of project manager to oversee the draw site project and since that project should be completing next year, early next year, we won't need as much money in the budget for that, so that was a big cost and so most of that is going away. There are some higher costs with security, with our security guard, janitorial, that is listed here on that supplies and services line on the table up top and capital outlay consists of two runway closure boxes and a remodel to add some offices. We have economic development now that is at that workspace and with the addition of the airport lease coordinator and then now trying to move one of our economic development managers from the powerhouse out to the airport so the team can be in one location, there's a need to have some additional offices and so it includes that as well. And then moving on to fleet services, we did talk about the big increase for fleet services, there is an increase of almost 45% because it is not just people, but as people are more efficient, it is going to take more inventory, parts, all of those things, so the entire budget is increasing and again, this is all allocated to the users, so public safety is experiencing an increase, solid waste is experiencing an increase, water and wastewater and transit are our biggest users of the fleet system and they are all seeing an increase in their fleet services allocation. For capital outlay for fleet, they are looking for a workspace, to remodel a workspace to accommodate the new crew leader and their NAPA parts manager that they have on site, two vehicle lifts, a hydraulic cylinder bench and several heavy and light duty truck replacements, so some solid waste engine rebuilds and then some cart, transit bus rebuilds that tend to just happen and they want to make sure they have the money to cover that. And then moving on to building maintenance, which is the last operating budget, it is...
Can I have one question real quick?
Yes.
Before we leave fleet services?
Yep.
That includes not just trash and city vehicles like the, like the trucks and the SUVs, but also, does that include fire and police?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and not just vehicles, but their equipment as well, so tractors and all of those things, all of the equipment.
The giant armored personnel carrier?
What's that?
The giant armored one too?
Yeah, I am not, yeah, that one too. So building maintenance is down 2.2%, let's see, we have some one-time city improvements, I believe I, you were provided that in your budget books as far as what those building and site alterations are, we can certainly look at those in more detail if so desired, but those are included and then we have some capital outlay as well and the capital outlay consists of a remodel to the supply and break room up here upstairs at the city complex. It also includes the installation of some exterior building LED lights out here on the city complex and that's just for more secure, security in the nighttime as those of us ladies leave from the office here. So with that, that covers operating budgets, before we start the capital projects section, I didn't know if it was a good time for a break for everyone and, okay, so...
How long a break do we want to take? Five or 10?
Just a minute.
What's consensus? 10, okay, take 10 minute break, be back here at 20, basically nine minutes, how's that, so 20 after.
Great.
All right, so moving on to capital projects. So when we talk about our five-year capital improvement plan, I think it's important to point out that everything included on our five-year capital improvement plan has an identified funding source. So there isn't anything on the plan that is unfunded. We used to include unfunded projects on the plan and felt that it was just not transparent at all as far as what the city was going to be doing. So everything on our plan does have a funding source. So when we move to funding sources, right, talking about funding sources, what are some of the funding sources for our capital projects? We have just our general revenues that we use. So taxes and state shared revenues. Although we don't collect a large amount of development fees, they do still help pay for capital projects. And we talked earlier about outside participation and contributions. That is a large component of our capital projects. Grants also is a large component. And then just our general user fees. We can also borrow money to pay for our projects. And we do have some of those projects on our plan. And we do that through general obligation bonds, which requires voter approval, excise tax or utility revenue bonds. We can also borrow money from the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority for water and wastewater projects. Direct placements, which are really monies that you borrow from a bank, and also through lease and purchase agreements. And then, of course, what we love to do is be able to use cash in just our excess cash reserves for our projects. So the five-year capital improvement plan is a total cost of $343.8 million. So that's for the full five years. You'll see the bar in the middle, which is the highest number, at $173.8 million are our street projects. And then, of course, we have parks and recreation, and that's primarily Sunbelt Park and the Recreation Center. And then water and wastewater always have a large number of projects as well. Our airport, too. Now, I do want to point out that on the five-year cost of $343 million, that is not all just city money. That is either, that is not just all city monies. For fiscal year '25, $128.7 million of the fiscal year '25 projects are either coming from grants or outside sources. So contributions or participation. And then for the fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '29 projects that are identified, 8.6 million of those projects are being funded in grants or outside funding sources. So we'll move through the projects by category. We'll highlight a couple as we go through them. And then if you have other questions that you wanted, that you have on other projects that we don't cover, by all means, please ask. So for our general government capital projects, I'm gonna talk to, I just want to point out the Powerhouse Roof Overlay Project. That is a grant-funded project, primarily grant-funded. And that actually is gonna be on the council meeting agenda coming up in May. So we'll be starting that one soon. And by, from the time that I put this slide together to the time I saw the agenda item, we are gonna have a slight match of about $14,000 on that project. So it's a, it's a $287,000 project, but there'll be $14,000 coming from city monies. And then also the project management platform. I wanted to highlight that one, let you know that that is the, our current permitting software replacement. We are already out to bid on the replacement software. And I believe bids are due by the end of May. We're hoping to have a contract to council sometime in August to award the project and start implementation of a new system. And I'm happy to share that Manager Walsh did have some comments on that proposal when we issued it and was able to put his comments into that. And probably the biggest one on this list is the 519 East Beale Street Building Design Concept and Temporary Approvements that Manager Walsh is gonna talk to.
Thank you. So 519 Beale, as, am I speaking into the microphone? 519 Beale, as you're all aware, was the initial proposed for the EV museum. And I will share, I know on council we have differing views, a number of views on how to move forward with that building. So there are a number of options that we can do, that we can consider in moving forward with this building. One option, I know that the EV Museum Group is still pursuing grants, still pursuing the, moving forward with, with improving that building and having it as a, as an EV museum, as a, as a location, a destination location in downtown Kingman. They are, one of the, I had a meeting with them this week. And one of the struggles that they've mentioned that they have is, is a commitment from the city that that will be the location to be able to move forward with, with their grants and those types of projects, or those types of pursuits that they're in. Staff, looking at it and knowing the various opinions, not knowing, knowing of various opinions on council, has looked at three different options for this. And, and we can definitely have this in a, in a follow-up session. But just to explain what you're seeing in the budget right now, there are three options that we're looking at. One is basically hold off and, and basically budget nothing this year and allow, and I take that back, it wouldn't be nothing. We would still need to do some improvements on the building with the roof and the AC units. But basically hold off and allow the EV museum to continue pursuing their grants and continue to pursue that building. There would be, along with that option, it would be basically the council looking at possible lease options with the EV museum in order for them to show that they've secured the building and, and can move forward. The other extreme would be that council says, okay, we don't want that for an EV museum. We want to use that as an expansion for our development services, one-stop shop that's been discussed. That option, I believe we were looking almost three, and I, I had my numbers wrong previously. I think I've spoken to some and I mentioned about a million and a half. I think, actually, the number is closer to 3 million that it would take for a full, basically a full renovation, a remodel of that to bring it up to, you know, a one-stop shop for the city. Somewhere in the middle, and actually what we're proposing on this would be a temporary refresh for the building that would allow staff to go in there, expand into that building, make it a one-stop shop on a, on a temporary basis, and, and still allow for that EV museum to be able to do, you know, pursue their grants, achieve the funding that they feel is necessary, and then work out some sort of agreement with them in the future. I will say, you know, once we expand into it, even, even on a temporary basis, that, that addresses a problem short-term. But if the EV museum is successful in achieving their grants and is successful in, in being able to move into that location, now we've got our staff that we will need to find another location for. So what we've at least placed in the budget right now is a placeholder and definitely we can, we want to seek council's direction on that as far as, you know, which direction to go with that. But those are the, basically the three options that we've kind of put together as possible options for that building.
I have a question on that. That building is costing us what on an annual basis, as is?
Let's see, I've got the numbers in there on electric vehicle. I wanna say fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
I was gonna say fifty-six thousand, I saw it somewhere, can't find it.
I believe it's fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, and it's in need of a roof, is what I also read?
And AC, HVAC.
Okay.
And that's about seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that's included in this, this category here in the five-year plan.
Right. All right, thank you.
And can I ask, if you made it a one-stop shop, where else would become vacant? Downstairs, across the street, anywhere else in?
So making it a one-stop shop, what we'd be looking at is, is development services. So planning and zoning building, they would be moving into it. We'd also be looking at engineering. So the engineering department would be moving into it. And it would also include, or economic development. So pulling the economic development folks from the airport into town. So those three locations, basically downstairs here, the old post office, and, and economic development, their offices out at the airport.
Powerhouse, too, or?
No, no.
Okay, and then would that all just be strictly city? Or would there be, did that plan have offices to rent out, potentially short-term lease?
I think initially we'd be looking at strictly city, but, you know, depending on how we filled it up.
But there's nothing in, in the plans about?
No.
Okay.
Now, the EV folks have mentioned that theirs would be a multipurpose. So they could house the entire ED team. So that whole department could go over there and they, they would be hopeful that that would happen. So it could be a multi-use, multipurpose building in addition to a revenue generating, sales tax opportunity for the city.
And a nice end cap.
Thank you.
Since we're talking about this, we have a couple departments that need space. The police department, I think Public Works is doing a space need study in this building. And we had talked about in our planning meeting some different options. But we didn't really talk about purchasing existing buildings. That's something Havisu did with their courthouse. I was just looking, just before I came here, for an example, there is a large commercial office space on Stockton Hill, 2404 Stockton Hill. It's 12,300 square feet. They want $2.2 million for it. And it's already set up as, you know, office space. So you would hope that that doesn't have a, I see you guys looking that up. So you'd hope that doesn't need a ton of improvements. But is there room to start setting money aside to start purchasing, you know, like for Public Works? There's land going out Route 66 for sale. Or, I'm not suggesting this building necessarily, but I'm just saying, starting to put money aside so that we could purchase existing buildings and start moving departments there. I hate to see people leave downtown, but I think the idea of adding on to this building or tearing this building down and building a new one, you're talking so much more than just, and this is a lot of office space, over 12,000 square feet for 2 million. So maybe, you know, that's, that's the direction as we start looking at where we can buy. We aren't there yet, but, you know, the police, they want $700,000 to improve their building this year. Wouldn't it be better if we use that money to purchase a new building that, that would be big enough for them instead of sort of throwing this money into theirs? And then if you think about it, then you could sell, you could start selling these older buildings and try to recoup some of those costs. So, you know, I don't know what that looks like, if it's like a fund where we're putting money aside so that if the opportunity comes up, we can jump on it. But it's something definitely to look at.
No, that's a great point. And looking through the budget, you do see a number of expansions or repairs and all of that. So, so we're, we're at capacity where we're at. And, you know, so as we continue to grow, it's, it's little by little. So no, definitely a, a look at, a step back in a bigger picture view of, okay, finding something where there's already that opportunity to grow is definitely a, a good direction to go with it. Identifying those funding sources is the trick. But no, we can definitely go back and, and set up a, basically a capital improvement plan. You know, and not necessarily that we'll put it out to a need study or anything like that, but, but really look internally of, okay, in order to function properly, this is, this is what we need. These are the office spaces. These are the square footage type things that we need and start planning for the future, start, start moving that direction. I, I think it's a great idea.
It'd be helpful, you know, last year, the Mojave Educational Services building was for sale. If we'd had, if we were ready, we, we could have been the one to purchase that and kept some, you know, we could have kept more people downtown and had that office space. And maybe that could have been our one-stop shop. But we weren't in a position to do that, and we hadn't had that discussion. So it'd be nice to work on that this year, for sure.
Absolutely.
And then my other question, two questions. One, I noticed that we added general government as a new title for this group. But where did branding, beautification and signage go? We, it was something that we had approved every year, starting in the 21, FY '21, for about $700,000, and now it's MIA.
So that was mostly for the signage, right? And since we have pretty much purchased the digital signs, we eliminated that project. And we have, we are repurposing those monies towards the traffic interchange landscaping. So that's where those, that's where those monies are.
Okay.
Are repurposed.
Okay, because I, I did think it was a bigger project than just the digital signs. But if it is going to other beautification projects, then I won't fight that.
Okay.
Okay.
And thank you, because I was gonna ask about the traffic interchange beautification and where those funds were coming from. So I appreciate you answering that question.
Anything else on our new category called general government capital projects?
I just had a question on 519 Beale. How long do we wait for the Electric Card Museum? That's my question.
My understanding with them is, you know, they, they're ready to apply for these grants and these grant funds, you know, will be decided. So I would say, well, looking at the budget, we have, you know, I mean, I, I would, I would hope that council could be agreeable that we revisit this topic next budget session. Because then we'll have the opportunity to do some investigation, like you said, over this next year of space and needs and other locations and things like that. And then, then I feel like we can make a good.
I just don't wanna tie our hands for too long on it.
No, 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 not at all.
I can get, you know, I can get behind 12 months.
Thank you. And, and that was part of my reason for asking, you know, should it just sit there? You know, what is it, what's the expense to the, to the city for it just to sit there? I, I know at some other meetings, Krista had talked about some training and things like that, but I see in the budget that we're remodeling the Powerhouse Conference Room for $75,000 to accommodate city trainings that will happen there. So, so I think, you know, next budget, if, if we'd be agreeable to that.
And just to point out on this, we've got the $300,000 in there. That doesn't mean, that basically gives us the option to do that. By placing that $300,000, it gives us the option. I believe that EV museum is definitely another council item, you know, council agenda item, or maybe even a workshop to go through and discuss that. But by, by placing the $300,000 in here, that, that'll, that gives us that flexibility if that is a direction that we end up going. But if, if that's the direction we don't, then we don't spend that money. So just because it's in there, we don't have to spend it for, for any different reason.
I'd say we definitely need to look at the roof.
Yeah.
AC can wait, but, yeah, okay.
So just to confirm, moving forward, we're leaving the $300,000 in the project account, and we won't touch it unless there's further direction from council on that. We do have a project at the bottom of this list that's $78,000 for the roof and AC. And I'm hearing that we'll budget for the roof, but leave the AC alone.
Well, if it's not gonna be occupied, is there, is there a need? Are we using it?
I would leave the money there because you might find out in six months that we are gonna use it and would rather have the money there if you were gonna do those instead of, I mean, because it's not that much, 78,000. They're, they're doing their appraisal, so they might have an answer much sooner. They could turn around and say, yes, we want it, or no, we don't, in less time than 12 months. And if you don't budget this, then you don't get it. So I think leave it and just wait and see.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that you would spend money on air conditioning just for our employee trainings, but we're definitely gonna try to use that building as much as we can as long as it's ours in the meanwhile. The powerhouse isn't really large enough for a big employee training, kind of even with a remodel, to be honest with you, but, yeah, but anyway.
Just plan those in the fall, Krista.
A hundred percent. Outdoors.
How often do you do large trainings?
How often do you do large trainings?
Um, we've done them a couple times, two, two times a year or so, and then plus, we've been doing like our, uh, Employee Benefits Fair, things like that, so we've been using, using the space three or four times a year, for sure.
Three or four, okay.
Sorry, and appreciation lunches and that kind of stuff you've had there too.
Uh, weather permitting, yeah, so we'll try to do it Centennial, but we, yeah, a hundred percent, we've had to move it there before as well.
Sure.
And then I believe that, uh, FIRE Education, they've used it as well. Sometimes the powerhouse is booked previously and things like that. So again, not a, not a reason to do a full AC thing, but definitely, we would wanna use it if we could.
Okay, thank you for that direction. Um, okay, moving on to our parks and recreation category. So there are quite a few more, uh, equipment replacements on the list this year. And we've tried to now plan them over the next couple of years, so we know what's coming, and so you'll see that there are some in the fiscal year 26 category as well. Um, for fiscal year, I guess for the entire five-year plan, we talked about the Recreation Center earlier, and I shared that we're moving forward with that Needs Assessment and Design Concept Report. That is in fiscal year 25. We've moved the design up also, um, if, um, if, if that's so desired. And then ultimately, we're hoping to do some public education, go out to the voters, and then, um, and break ground in fiscal year 28. So that is based on the retreats, at the retreat, the direction from there. And then Sunbelt Sports Park, still keeping Phase 1 on fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26. And then put the additional $14 million in fiscal year 28, thinking that we can ask the voters at one time to approve the Rec Center and the Sports Park, and then move to construct both of those projects in fiscal year 28. Um, there is a project in here that's new, and that is the Grand View Pool Upgrade, and that is $550,000, and Manager Walsh is going to cover that one.
Before you cover that one, I wanna back up a couple lines to, um, the netting. So you see the driving range netting is 100,000 over the next three years? Is that a phased project?
Yes.
Okay, so they're gonna.
Started this year.
Some of it, and then in the next fiscal year, some of it, and, and so each phase is 100,000.
That's, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, my apologies.
Thank you. So Grand View Pool, um, some, some, uh, how would you put it? Was brought to our attention. We've got the pump room, it wasn't brought to our attention, we've known, I guess. So, but the, the, the pump room is located down, uh, below grade, um, a- as well as some of the filtering and, and the various mechanics that keep the pool running. Um, and looking at that with a consultant, we, we felt that bringing that pump room and the filtering, uh, area up to the surface would, would make it much easier for staff to, to address it, be able to get in there, and, uh, and basically make it more functional. That, what, what we looked at is, is, is being able to go through this season, no, no issues with the pump, the pool working this season, and then at the end of this season, basically starting that, that remodel project, moving those, those, the major pumps up from the, the bottom there, up onto the surface, so that it's easier access for our workers. Um, it's easier repairs when, when they go down, but that's what we're looking at with that 550,000. And Mike had a, a consultant out here a couple months ago that looked at it, and, and basically made those suggestions as well.
So I had a question on, on that as well. Once we move that above ground, I believe we have also, um, some other, uh, pool deck and the liner, so that's in that 550,000?
That is, yep, all of that's included.
And then how many more seasons do we expect to get out of, I mean, spending over half a million dollars? What, what is, 10 years?
Yes, it could be several more years. The company that came and looked at this has a pool that, in Tucson, that's over 100 years old that they've done work on, and they feel very confident that it'll be a, a long-term fix for, for this pool.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, half a million dollars, we're gonna get a lot of use out of this for many seasons to come.
Yep, many seasons to come. And I can ask them, but like I said, they're, that pool, our pool was built in 1941, and it's been, been like Tim, Tim mentioned, uh, several like, uh, repairs and customized things, and, uh, so we're gonna bring it all up top and do it where it's safe for employees not to have to walk down kind of rickety steps and that kind of thing, and there's decks in there that go over a pipe, and it's just gonna be much more safe for our employees.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, I forgot to cover the very first project on this list, which is an additional baseball field at South Side Park. So we were approached, um, by, we've been appro, well, we know we don't have enough fields for all of our Little League programs. And so we've been approached by, um, one of the leagues in town that said, hey, there's this Arizona Diamondbacks Grant Program that, um, is available, that if you have the space, um, you should think about applying. And so after talking with, um, Mr. Miersman, his team was able to identify, um, extra space at South Side, um, at South Side Park, and we are actually going to be submitting a grant to that Arizona Diamondbacks Program. I don't know if, uh, we will be awarded, but if so, then the cost of the field is $600,000. And there will be some additional upkeep and whatnot, but certainly a benefit to the community and to our Little League programs. So we're crossing our fingers that it will get approved, so.
So just to follow up on that, if the grant doesn't happen, that 600,000 on the paper goes away.
Goes away.
Okay.
And as you have it pictured in our book, that's the quadplex, so it's actually four fields, four diamonds that we're gaining?
We're only gaining one field.
It's just one diamond?
Just one, yeah.
Just one more diamond, okay.
On the Sunbelt Park, so are we talking shovels in the ground in the next 12 months?
Yes.
12 months starting July 1?
Yes.
Okay, so that is really exciting. I also wanted to just, a little thing, the dump truck replacement. Is that the same dump truck as last year, or is it a different one?
This is a new one for parks.
Another one, okay.
On the Lewis Kingman Park, I just wanted to make note that that $908,000 is a grant.
So 457,000 of it is a grant, the rest is coming from city monies.
Perfect, thank you.
I'd like to go back to 519 bill. Um, I was just, my concern was if we were gonna spend that money, and then them come in in the next few months and say, well, we're gonna remodel, and those ACs basically were useless. But if we're using that building, I'm good spending that money. You know, the roof, it was just to protect the integrity of the building. But if we're using that building, I'm okay spending that money, 'cause I just, I, I'd hate to have them come in in three months and go, hey, we're, we're taking the building, and by the way, we're, we're, uh, re-engineering the whole thing, and all those ACs you put in are useless. I mean, I don't think that's gonna happen. I don't, I think they're gonna have a problem in the next 12 months getting this a, a lease, but I'm good with spending that money on that, if, if that'll help staff.
Thank you, that, that would be great.
I had a question about the playground equipment. Is that citywide, or is that a specific park, or is that specific playground at a park?
So it's specific playground equipment at parks, and the parks team identifies those playgrounds each year. I don't know which ones are included in this year's budget, but they are for a specific park.
But like Centennial has, I think, four different playground sets. Is it all? Would it, would something like this include all of them, or?
Typically, it's for one, it's for a couple of playgrounds, Mike?
It's to replace the old dangerous ones that we used to have.
Yeah, those metal slides. Do we have any of those?
Yes, what, what we do, we look at, um, our, our staff gets together and, and decides what we think we need, and then we take it to our commission, and they give us guidance, what, what they feel is the most important of what we recommend. That's kind of how we do it, we get the input from the community.
So it's not saying this is just for, this, 150 doesn't just go to Centennial for one year, and next year is Lewis Kingman, or?
No, like this year, we're doing Lewis Kingman Playground, and that's gonna, the construction on that's gonna start real soon. And, um, ne- next year, some of them that we're looking at, we're looking at some exercise equipment for adults even, that kind of things too. So we're looking at all different options, and we put that to the commission, and then, and in our August meeting, it'll be on the commission agenda, and they'll discuss what they think and give us their input on what they think.
So, sorry, I just, I'm, uh, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around the 150,000 per year is just a general fund-type idea for parks in general.
Correct.
And then the Lewis Kingman Park upgrades are separate than the 150?
So the Lewis Kingman Park upgrades is not playground equipment?
At all.
At all.
It's not, I thought, okay.
Nope, the playground equipment, everything for all of the parks comes out of the playground equipment line item.
And then Lewis Kingman Park was the wiring, the, the outlets, the lighting.
Ramadas.
Ramadas, okay.
Bathroom.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public safety. So we have a couple of exciting projects for public safety for the Fire Department. Um, in fiscal year 25, so public, uh, the Fire Department has been asking over the last few years for full remodels of Fire Station 23 and Fire Station 24. And, and they've been pushed out, or not included, and I'm happy to share that we are able to include those remodels in this year's, um, uh, capital improvement plan, if approved by the council. So those are both on the books, as well as Fire Station, uh, 21. So Fire Station 21 was, was included in this year's five-year plan. There've been some design modifications back and forth, um, between our design consultant and FIRE. Um, so it was delayed, um, so they are moving, starting to move forward with it. It will finish in fiscal year 25. So they will have three remodeled, um, fire stations at the end of fiscal year 2025.
Can you tell us a little bit more about what's included in these remodels? I've read the descriptions, and they were, they're kind of vague, like, the one here, they're getting, um, some kind of fence for their, to protect their parking. I, I mean, can you just paint us a picture?
I was gonna ask Chief Jaeger to approach.
Thinking the same lines.
And Jack, I guess, they both have put together the plans for the projects.
While he's, um, doing that, I also, uh, I, I know the age of Fire Station 24 and 21, but I was not able to find 23. So can you tell me when 23 was built also?
Eighties, eighty, eighty-seven. Sorry.
24 was in 87.
Jack, do you know off the top of your head? It was in the eighties. I'll, I will have that answer for you before I leave here.
Thank you.
So, just in general, what, what are you doing?
So Station 1, um, right here is, uh, on the operations side, basically a full gut, I guess you'd say. Um, and complete redesign. Um, we're having to install windows, and the bunk facilities are in the bedrooms, so they have access out. Bringing it up to current code, um, but it is a complete remodel. This, this is a, this building here will be a complete remodel, as well as an addition on to the, um, I don't know what side that is, but we're adding a, uh, extending a room and then adding a room, um, for their turnout gear, uh, the cancer reduction, washing machines, uh, the extractors, those kind of things. So it's, it's a pretty significant remodel.
Um, keeping with the current design, the, I like the sadies design.
As far the, the.
You know, from the outside.
The outside is, there's no change.
Oh, I thought you said you were adding on.
Some windows.
Oh, okay.
Um, the building that we're, or the side that we're adding on to, I'm assuming Jack can speak a little more. It's the same design, nothing's changing.
Okay.
Uh, on the exterior of the building, it'll be minimal, uh, changes, and it's on the side, you probably, you won't even see it, um, because of where it's located, unless you drive through the parking lot.
And then it's something about, uh, protected parking, or fence?
Secured parking, that's one of, the, down here, I still gotta work with, with Jack and his team. We're not, I'm not sure what that looks like, because the city shares the access, and, uh, we just don't know. I don't think that is included in, in the remodel at all, anyway, so it would be a future project. Um, the other stations, um, it was already approved, uh, staff's working on it, um, to do the automatic gate at Station 2, like we have at Public Works Facilities, uh, to secure, so people don't go in the training grounds. Um, and then Station 4, again, I'll have to work with Jack and his team. I don't know what that looks like, because it's right by the school, and we, we just don't have much room there at all to do anything, so I'm not sure what that looks like. Station 3, 23, I'm sorry, um, is the one behind Circle K. That's the main one we need secured, because we get a lot of, um, traffic and transient traffic through the property, and actually stay on the property that we're trying to, to keep them out, so that, that's one that's really needed.
Okay. Yeah, I can see how you could put up a fence and a gate at that one, but I, I couldn't imagine how you're gonna do it down here.
Turning the water hose on, leaving it on, stealing the water hose.
Oh, no.
So all kinds of things.
Okay.
So we're, we're just, and, not that it's happened, but trying to prevent them from getting in vehicles and those kind of things, so that's what we're working on there. The Station 23 remodel, um, the original plan was a remodel, add-on, do, do a, a big project, but financially, we just weren't unable to do that, and so we focused, brought it, scaled it way down to focus on the living quarters of it. Um, we have an open bunk, we, the bunker, the bedroom. Um, and again, as we remodel, we try to get in a position, so if we hire female employees, um, that we have separate bedrooms, um, and facilities. So, um, they, they've put together a good, a good remodel project for that, redoing the kitchen, and, um, just bringing it up to date. Um, Station 4 is a little more extensive. Uh, that one is a, it's a remodel, but it's, it's a lot of flooring and re, you know, bring the bathrooms up to where someone can fit in them. Um, redoing the kitchen, um, and, and again, just facelift painting. Uh, not much on the exterior, none of them are exterior projects, it's mainly interior, but quite extensive, because they are, you know, built in the eighties, and they're, they're just wore out.
Right.
Much needed.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So on Station 24, there's no, um, additions?
No.
So it's just, it's more costly, but you're not adding any more space?
The only interior that's, that we're not touching are the bedrooms, because we were able, out, just out of our operation fund, uh, to get those painted and new lights and up, upgraded. Um, so those are fine, and then the weight room area is the same, we did that in-house. Um, and so other than that, everything's, uh, getting quite extensive. Uh, even out in the bays where the trucks park, it's, it's getting a facelift, and then there's an area where their turnout, their gear is stored. Uh, that's getting all redone as well with, with, um, just a whole new remodel of that whole area.
So with these remodels, what kind of lifespan do you expect to get? You're, and I'm talking space-wise, so we're not gonna, in a couple, a few years, have you come and say, we're out of space, or we need, I mean, the, these are big projects.
So unfortunately, these stations were, when they were designed years ago and built, they, they were only built to house like Station 4, one engine company. They're just, the footprint is not big enough. Uh, Station 1's the same way. We, working with staff, tried to do everything that we could to make it to where we could put more guys in there, and you just, you can't, there's only so much room for bedrooms, so much room for living room. And so they're always gonna be, Station 3 has a little bit of room for some expansion, but the expansion we were looking at was storage, um, to, to, to put equipment in, but, um, they're just designed as a single-response station. They were never designed as a multi-company station. Um, Station 5, um, is going to be designed as a multi-company, room for expansion. Just, and, and they're ba, it's based on location and what their purpose is. You know, there's no reason to have two engine companies staffed at, at Station 24 on Easter. It's just designed as that station, and so what we look at is, and that's where, just where we're at as a city, because of our growth and expansion that we're having, it's not making that station bigger, unfortunately, because our geography, we're looking at growth and going out, so we gotta plan for those stations, for new stations, to cover those expansion, uh, areas that we have. And we, we have some of those now. You guys have identified Station 5, which we've identified as a much-needed station due to growth. The next one could be, uh, Stockton Hill Road, going, going out toward Fish and Game. That's, that's all city, and right now, we have agreements with another Fire Department to help us cover that area, just because it doesn't fiscally make sense to build a station right now, but when growth happens, then, then it. But when growth happens, then, then it, we'll, we'll have those conversations. Yeah, we just, that's where we're at. Hopefully I answered your questions.
Yeah, so where it was going was, we're gonna, we're gonna need to add another station. I mean, obviously Five is, is highly important, but we're gonna have to add another station, not necessarily add on or make more room at the existing stations that we have.
We'll be looking, projecting as growth happens, that's, that's our job to, to plan what that looks like based on our, our data and based on our response time models. What we, what we wanna keep as a response time. Right now, it's, it's at five minutes. We, our goal is to be on scene within five minutes of, of something. And you, once, you can MapQuest and, and Google Map it. And once you start getting out of that five minutes, Station Five takes us eight minutes to get up there, which is, we know that it, the station's needed there. And we'll just have to do the same thing for Stockton Hill Road, Rancho, up in that area. But Station Five also, once interchange's done, that takes that, a load off of Station Four. If we just had Station Four right now over there with no plans of an interchange or access over there, we'd be looking, with the subdivisions that are coming in, we'd be looking at another station over there. So I, I guess to answer your question, these stations are fine for what they're built for. And, and they'll last a long time, as long as we keep the maintenance up on them and do, do what we're doing.
Okay. No, that was a very, that was a very good answer. I, that's exactly what I was looking for, so thank you.
Does Five have any plans for administrative staff or is that still staying across the street?
So the direction that I got was to look at the design of the building and, and see what, which I'm working with, with Mike's team on the footprint of the land. We can make it as big as we want. It's just how much can we afford? And then how much land do we have available to, to do that with? And so we budget, I'm sure Tina will get to it here shortly on Five and talk about it a little more. But the, the intent was to, to move administration up there. But again, it, it depends on the footprint of the building or the property and how big we, we can make it. The other, in conversations, is to look at an alternative or, or a dispatch site. You know, one of our goals is to get that from out of downtown, which in turn would free up that building so Carl could have more room. But, or at least have an alternative site. So we haven't even started any of that conversation yet with design. Obviously, I'm waiting on budget.
No, the only reason I asked was because if we, if we had this hypothetical situation where every, we had the one-stop development center happen at Five-Nineteen and you moved admin to Number Five, then you would have two buildings that were empty side by side that we could utilize somehow, whether cell or, and they're historic, right? Both of them are historic. So, yeah, thank you.
I, since we're talking about it, I, I would like to see spilled Station Twenty-five, if possible, with these other departments in mind, the admin and dispatch. That dispatch building now really should be a retail location. Sorry, Carl. But, you know, I mean, if you made your one-stop shop, maybe Carl can move back here and, you know, and we could move people out to Twenty-five. Yeah, you're in the basement. That's.
He is now.
That was too far.
Yeah, you better.
Sorry, sorry, Carl.
Actually, Chief, Station Five, would it say a two-bay or would it be a three-bay because of?
No, you're looking at four-bay.
Okay. But that would, that, so that nine million estimate would go higher than that if it was a four-bay, wouldn't it?
It, it depends on the design of the building, what type of building. I can tell you, Bullhead just built a admin slash fire station and they were five-point-two in their two-bay. So we could go, I got a little excited when I heard that because it's, it's the one in Laughlin Ranch, if you haven't seen it, and I know you have. Yeah, so I mean, it's, yeah, it's just, my worries is you start talking dispatch, fire, admin, a big, of course, we have a lot bigger fire admin staff at that. Then, I wouldn't say bigger, we're about the same, but yeah, it's just, it, it all comes down to design and the footprint of the property and, and what your plans are.
What it sounds like, that would be the new, basically, fire complex. I mean, what we're all talking about.
I was just about to say, with the addition of Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and that opening up to the airport as well, I'm sure that that would be, the city's going that way.
Right. I'm sure you'd love to have that, so we just need to find the money for you.
Just make it happen, Chief.
No, it's just, it's in planning. We, we, you know, until we start meeting with the architects and, and figuring out what it looks like and then we'll, we'll have a better idea. But again, we haven't started that yet. We're hoping, obviously, budget goes through and we can start talking the design of it and, and see what we can come up with.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
Okay.
So with that, and Chief, there might be more questions, so we're just gonna cover Fire Station Twenty-five real fast. Just to share that originally, so we wanna move forward as quickly as possible with this project. So if we can get design done, right, in fiscal year twenty-five, then that means we're just that much closer to constructing the, the building. So we have budgeted design and originally, we were thinking, of course, design, we've gotta go out and, and spend over two-hundred thousand dollars to do this. Chief was able to dig through all of his, all of his files and records and he was able to find an old, an old version of a, of a design that we did for Fire Station Twenty-five. And so to bring that up to standards and speed, we reached out to Selberg Associates and we're budgeting only seventy thousand dollars to refresh that design. So that's a savings and that'll be completed this year. The other piece is, we talked about in the retreat, about possibly needing to increase the cost of Fire Station Twenty-five. We do know that Bullhead City was able to construct their fire station for under four million dollars. So we're hoping that the nine million dollars that we have in the five-year plan is way over budget, but certainly wanna be cautious and have the monies there and have those basically set aside for the project if we need to. But there may be good news with that, too. So just wanted to share that on that project.
Chief, those plans you found, were they for four-bay?
Yes.
Awesome.
They, they were an, an old design that was done two thousand and sixteen.
It's not that old.
In the architectural design world, it's old. Yeah, but it had, it had.
I know what you mean.
It, it just, we've gotta redesign it. It wasn't designed.
No, but yeah, but for that kind of, it's great that you found that.
And I do wanna make a note, even though Bullhead did their fire station that cheap, I say cheap, five-point-two million, that was all part of a bigger project that that contractor had as well. They remodeled four or five fire stations. It was a bond that they had. So even though that station only cost them much, they were able to get a lot better deal because obviously, he's already there, he's already working, supplies and all that. So just keep that in mind. I'm still hoping that, you know, we'll do everything we can, but I, I didn't wanna throw out there that we can get it done.
Oh, gone, Chief. Well, we can have him remodel all three of ours and then roll right into a brand-new station.
No, I just wanted to bring up, it was mentioned maybe a one-stop shop as far as with dispatch and that. I, I think if we start expanding into those, we, we might need to relook at that, that number that we've got for design because I think that's gonna start, you know, expanding the scope of that architect. So what we might be able to do is, is in the early phases with our architect is say, you know, here's some additional options on the conceptual side and see, okay, what, what do those dollar figures look like? If, if we go those routes, what do those dollar figures look like? Bring that to council and see, see how council would like to go forward. If we keep it close to that, then we'd be able to probably stay with that original amount. But we may want to, with, with that in mind, we may want to increase our design funds again.
We, we can, I mean, we can do that council's direction, so.
Expertise in that field. I'm just, the number that I got was from conversation with the architect based on having that. He was just gonna make changes, basically, but.
It's a minor, right?
Minor changes, so.
Okay. So we'll increase that to a hundred or so, okay. On the police side, I believe it was the vice mayor that shared there was over seven-hundred thousand dollars that are being spent. Maybe it was Councilwoman Staley. Okay. I started thinking about that voice that I heard. And it is for some awning structures, of course, their EOC, security and the upgrade in general in the room, restroom updates. And so we are recommending to, to move those projects forward. It should be noted that the training room security and training room upgrade are already projects that are in the queue. We're just moving, just continuing with them in fiscal year twenty-five. Okay? So moving on to the airport. I think the, the biggest thing that I wanna share here is that thirty-five point one million dollars of the thirty-five point seven that are budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five are coming from outside sources, whether that be grant funding or otherwise. So most of the airport projects across the board are funded with grant monies. Very little city match is necessary. The one thing I wanna share is the draw site cleanup. You'll see it's a big number, twenty million dollars. I do not, and we do not, expect that twenty million dollars is gonna need to be carried forward into fiscal year twenty-five at all. But in the event, right, it's a big project. And so we wanna make sure that we've got appropriations set aside in the event we need to. Plus, it gives us the flexibility, if there's something that you guys wanna change along the way, as far as any of the projects that we've identified, we've got some appropriations to kind of move around as well. So other than that, that's the only one that I was gonna point out on the airport list.
I was gonna ask about the supplemental wind cones relocation. That was on the budget last year for a hundred and twenty-five thousand? Now it's two-eighty-five?
Yeah. I'm looking at Mr. Plante, only because he kinda oversees that division. I don't know the answer off the top of my head for that. I don't know if it's creep, cost creep, or if it's something different.
So that project was delayed initially because the, and I apologize, Doug will probably smack me when I get back. There was something with the funding through the Fed side that they delayed that out. We were letting another project go ahead of us essentially. And then one of the locations was shown that it would have landed inside of Clear Zone, essentially, something we can't have anything over a certain elevation in. And so that was relocated outside of that.
Okay.
Oh, and then before you go anywhere, the, the airside drainage study, we've been working on that for a long time.
Yeah, so that one, we actually slowed down because all the development planning, we got like five things happening in one location around the, the Industrial Park Master Development Plan, the Drainage Master Plan. It says airside, but most, I say most, probably all of the work, if you look at the last master plan that was done, all that work is actually outside of the field. And so we slowed that down so we could coordinate that work along with the Rancho and Industrial Park Master Development Planning.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
They, they all just interconnect there.
All right, so moving on to streets, our largest, our largest cost category. We have, the interchange projects are the largest piece of the five-year plan as well as the five years for our pavement preservation or what we call our Street Repairs, Maintenance and Improvements Program. So we know that with Kingman Crossing, the interchange, we have a development agreement with, with KX Ventures to build the interchange. And we, they are participating slightly in the Southern to I-40, so basically Kingman Crossing Boulevard from Southern to I-40. And city is participating in the rest of the cost of that Boulevard. And then we have, of course, the Rancho Santa Fe T.I. and the Parkway as well as the Prospector Street to Rancho Santa Fe Parkway Extension on, on Airway. So those are all of the interchange projects and they are funded for fiscal year twenty-five. And then any other ones that you have questions on or wanna highlight at all or cover?
The AD improvements along Andy Devine, is that the project that we just chose between, for the CD, CB, CD, you know what I mean? Thank you.
It is the remaining, remainder of the current project that is going on.
Okay.
And just to clarify, there is, I remember there was like the twenty-five street projects we wanted to do and one of them, like number one, was the widening of Stockton Hill. None of that is in here yet, correct?
So not the widening of Stockton Hill. So there is a design const, if you go down to the Stockton Hill Road Turn Lanes and Design Concept Report, that is the project that will add turn lanes, I think, from Detroit to maybe where it goes into the hospital, I believe is where that is. But no, the Stockton Hill Road Widening Project is a very expensive project and it is not on here.
And then the turn bays for Central and Seneca and Walupi Mountain Road? I think we thought those were gonna happen last year.
And I believe you've approved design on those and that was brought to council just a few council meetings ago. As far as construction of those, obviously, we're not expecting it to be completed until fiscal year twenty-five. But Jack, do you have any other insight on that? You may just wanna sit here for a few minutes while we go through street projects.
Sure. So you guys approved the construction contract for that initially. Desert Construction, the contractor on that, said that they'd be able to get that done by June thirtieth. They are not confident in that, so we rolled that just to make sure that those funds are there. But they were wrapping up some projects, downtown streetscape being one of those. Once those are done, then they're moving to Walupi. I don't have a solid date on that at the moment, though, but it should be this summer.
So this summer, that's great. Okay. And then do you wanna tell us about the traffic interchange landscaping?
I don't know what Carl will let me tell you at the moment. So I have, I have an agenda item for you guys that has two proposals. One is for the amount that's budgeted there. That's coming up on this next council. The alternative proposal is the beautification money. We did have some signs that were designed for either into town. And so I didn't know if that was still a priority or if we wanted to take that money and put it into a T.I. landscaping to expand how much we can do. The total for all three of those is like seven million dollars. And so we were only budgeting like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and so, or two-eighty, I think. So I, I combined those two CIPs as an alternative for you guys and you'll see that in the upcoming council meeting.
You're saying that it's seven million dollars to do what again?
All three TIs. If you look at the full landscape, the square, the square footage of those, they're, they're significant, especially Andy Devine. That total was seven million dollars. So the upcoming council meeting, we have a portion, which I was directed in the past to look at Stockton Hill as the first priority. And so I have two proposals coming to you. One is for the amount of money that we had budgeted for just the, the T.I. landscaping. And then one was for the T.I. landscaping plus the beautification, the sign money specifically, to try and do more of the T.I. itself. And in that, we've noted, because there were, a significant portion of that is irrigation for the existing trees because the irrigation that's in there was not operable or serviceable any longer. And so we actually, in this work that we're proposing to you, does not include irrigation to try and lower those costs and get more landscape done.
And then, oh, sorry, James.
And that's for all three existing TIs?
The proposals you guys will see are for a portion of Stockton Hill.
Just Stockton Hill?
Correct.
Okay.
So then those trees that, I, you know, I noticed some, like the ones off of Beverly are slowly dying. So we're not gonna fix the irrigation to try to keep any of those?
We looked at trying to fix the irrigation in there and it's beyond repairable at this point. So that's why initially, the design included a full rebuild or a full new system for irrigation.
Okay, thank you.
And Jack, that's just the existing interchanges that we're talking about, of course.
Correct.
Right. And then you'd mentioned earlier, Tina, the Rancho Santa Fe T.I. Have we budgeted monies for that, for landscaping for that? Or is that in, is that all in that project?
So we don't have anything for Rancho Santa Fe in the designs we did. It was for Beal, Stockton Hill and Andy Devine. So we don't have anything for Rancho Santa Fe in the designs we did. It was for Beal, Stockton Hill and Andy Devine. I believe the IGA's for those two interchanges, uh, I don't know that I ever saw the final version, but landscaping was discussed as part of the construction of the TIs. So initially the, the landscaping, I think is part of the IGA, but then the city will end up picking up maintenance, which, um, we want to go back to ADOT because there's no IGA specific to the overall maintenance of the traffic interchanges currently.
Okay. Thanks, Jack.
Jack, I had one more question. After the, the new interchange comes in on Beal and that gas station alley kind of has that, uh, lightning of traffic caused by that, um, the lanes there that are currently, if you're going towards Bullhead, um, you have one turn lane right and then one, one straight forward. Is there going to be any sort of changes in lane usage and, and do we need to start like thinking about what happens in three years when traffic lines? Do we need to, or just traffic flow and, uh, lanes usage and whatnot? And also like coming into town, you have two lanes that turn left and one that goes straight. I know that a lot of people don't turn left when they should.
Yeah. So that, that actually is ADOT jurisdiction in that area. Uh, we obviously will provide them feedback. The West TI project that you guys have probably seen, the bid was awarded and is anticipated to start this summer. To my knowledge, does not include any changes to, uh, the current configuration at I-40 and Beal Street.
Okay. That's what I was asking. I watched the flyover, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. So moving on to, uh, a few other categories. So we have our transportation, our transit, which is the Transit Center feasibility study that we talked about earlier. It's the other half of the project that is currently, um, currently in process. We have our solid waste. Uh, the three projects there is the forklift replacement. Um, that is being contributed by water and wastewater as well. We also have our solid waste truck replacement program. So that figure in fiscal year 25 are for three replacement units. And in fiscal year 26 and 27, it's one, and then two in 28 and one in fiscal year 29. And then also a used rear load refuse truck is, um, being recommended to be included. Uh, when we move on to our stormwater, we've got the Airway Avenue Drainage Improvements, uh, project that we're already working on. And this is just, um, I want to say the remainder of what is currently, uh, expected to be spent this year. So it's the carryover. And then also Bull Mountain Interim Tranel improvements. Looking at wastewater, we've got the Grace Neil Sewer Main that we have been talking about. Uh, that project is now 5.1 million dollars based on the recent direction, um, from council to reduce the scope just slightly. Uh, to help the funding of that. And what else do we have on here? The Hill, Hilltop Plant, the BioSolids Containment Area. Uh, this is a project that was on the books this year as well. We are still waiting for ADEQ to, um, work through the permitting process on this so that we can move forward with this project. So, um, that is still in the works and so this is carrying into, uh, the next fiscal year. That's all that I have specifically to cover. If there are any other questions on those projects?
Yes. But it's a page before.
Okay.
I had a question about fire. I just thought about it. The ambulance isn't there.
Yeah, it's the rescue unit is what we're calling it.
Got it.
Okay. So moving on to water, um, then, uh, I always like to share about the automated reader, meter reading project. Um, and it is an ongoing project. It's a project that will go on for quite a few years because we don't have the monies available to just pay for everything upfront. I can share that for fiscal year 25, we were awarded a Bureau of Reclamation Grant, uh, maybe WIFA. I think it might be WIFA. And, um, those monies, almost all of that project will be covered with WIFA monies. And so that's good. And we will also be looking to apply for Bureau of Reclamation Grants for larger dollar amounts. But we don't currently have a funding source for it. We're not sure about that. This is what we can afford without grants. But we're certainly going to look to tackle that project quicker, um, by, by, um, applying for additional grants. Um, let's see, we've got, of course, the Santa Rosa Transmission Line Project that we have talked about over the last few council meetings. And of course, service lines and distribution lines. So talking about all of the leaks. Rob and his team certainly have, um, underway and continue every year to put money towards service line replacements, distribution line replacements. So those are included in the five-year plan as well. I don't know if there are any other questions on any of the water projects? Okay. And so then certainly last but not least, I want to thank you, um, for your engagement through all of this. And I am not concluding, I'm just saying thank you.
Thank you. But don't conclude. So, um, I had a question. I think there are a number of projects that we are requesting, um, from the state in their appropriations and, and their budget process. So I wondered if you could speak to those and, and the dollar amounts and where and how those could impact our budget?
So it is the same request as last year. So it's for the Airway Avenue Drainage Improvements. It's for the Rancho Santa Fe and I believe Eastern is on that list as well. They are not included in here. We do not believe that we are going to get the funding for those. But it will certainly make a major difference if we do. So, um, off the top of my mind, I want to say it's over $9 million is what we're expected to get from those project, from that bill. But again, I, I, we don't have them included. But to your point, it will make a difference on the Rancho's, certainly on the Rancho Santa Fe, um, Parkway Traffic Interchange. There are some monies for that. I can get the breakdown of exactly how much for each of those projects. But again, I didn't put much value into receiving those monies. So it's, nothing's included in the budget for those.
Well, I'm still hopeful.
Yes.
We haven't been given a no.
Nope, we have not.
So it's a yes until it's a no. It's a good point. That's how, that's how I, I work. So I just thought it was important to disclose that to the public, you know, because that, that can have a huge impact.
Absolutely.
If you happen to see our state legislators milling around town, um, or other towns or at meetings, we have requests for money to come to our town and that is going to greatly impact us. So please reach out, please encourage for them to do their work at the Capitol. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
It's hard to follow up, but I found it. Sticking that I missed earlier about the, um, sorry. It's not a foolproof system. Uh, funding for a city app. We had talked about it in the, um, in our planning meeting to get an app to better communicate. And especially with the PIO, I'd really like us to make some headway on this this year. So, um, maybe it's in there and I didn't see it. But I, I would really like some funding for that.
So I can sh- no. Okay. So I can share that our engineering team has been working, I think my, uh, Mr. Garmin had shared this, uh, at the retreat, that we do have, uh, monies, it's part of our GIS system for an app that we can use for most of what you have requested during the retreat, which is notifying where the citizens can notify us of potholes or water leaks or whatever it might be. They can put a pin somewhere, goes out to all of the departments and email to all of the departments. They're notified that, hey, your inquiry's been, uh, received. It will be addressed. And then as we make progress on those, um, those concerns, they'll also get notifications. What it doesn't do, and I think this was the piece, um, and, and we're going to be doing some diving into the existing system to see. But what I'm not sure that it does, and I don't know if Mike's here, is notify. And I think that was a part of it, notifying the citizens of, hey, there's a water leak in this area. Or, hey, we're experiencing traffic issues in this area. So I don't know that it has that component, but we do have that city app, um, as far as citizens being able to notify us. And we are currently getting ready to roll it out. Mike's getting, actually has been, uh, trying to schedule training for all of the departments so that we're aware so that we can roll it out. I also know that Manager Walsh has, um, his, his own take on it as well. And I think him and the city engineer have been working on that. But that is something that was already something we were working on when you guys brought it to the retreat.
Good. I, you know, I, if possible, and I think it is possible, I'd like to expand that. So it has our, um, calendar of events, you know, it has a place to get updated information, good news, you know, um, maybe a synopsis of the positive things that happened at the last council meeting or this project's getting ready to get started. A way to get good information out to people, the, the goods, the good stuff that we're not always so, um, that we're just not able to always get out. So to have an app that, and maybe you could make payments, like your business license, you could, you know, so more than just the pothole or, you know, making a report of a pothole or a water leak is really handy. But I'd like to see something robust where you, it's really your connection to knowing what's going on at the city at all times. It could do emergency alerts. It could, if I want to know what's going on this weekend, if I want to volunteer, you know, all those kind of things. We, and that's why I said this would be good with the, with, with the PIO because that person could kind of take this on and help make that, um, a way of marketing how great our city is.
No, that's great. And we, we can add some funding for that too. What we were looking at is, is one like Tina had explained with, with Mike's working with, with GIS. We're also out to bid right now, as was mentioned, on the permitting software. And a lot of those permitting softwares do have, you know, those types of apps you can use. Now whether they'll have the full capabilities to, to expand into all of that, I, I don't know for sure. But that was one of the angles we were looking at as well, is to see what they proposed with that. A lot of them do have, you know, that kind of centralized, you know, government type thing. But if not, we, we can definitely add some money for that to, to do some app development that would, would cover all of that. So, yeah, we can, we can look at adding that. That's, that's a great idea, especially like you say, with the, the new position coming on. Hand in hand, we can have them hit the ground running with that.
Well, and. Sorry, you have to make the app, um, something that people want to get. If I, if I was just going to report a water leak, I'd probably only download the app to send in the water leak. But if, if I was going to keep it on my phone at all times, it would have to be very useful all the time. So that would be, you know, the calendar, the emergency updates or, or, you know, other things. So it, I think it needs to involve any, um, department that has access to the, that, that works with the public. You know what I mean?
Well, we can't be the only city that wants this or has this. So I'm sure that reaching out to other cities that have apps and just, you know, why reinvent the wheel? And see what their capabilities are and putting something before us to see, you know, it's all encompassing of what you were looking at.
Very good. Will do.
So any, any concluding thoughts? Or we've got a few, just a few items that we will then, uh, bring back and add to the, uh, as part of, uh, the tentative budget. When we bring that back to you, we'll certainly bring a, a sheet to show you of, uh, what we did add or move or make changes to. And then tentative budget will be able to still bring to you, uh, on June 4th. So thank you again so much for your engagement and interaction and direction and guidance through, uh, this entire budget process.
Thank you. We, we can come up with something for tomorrow if you like.
If you want. All good? Okay. Once again, like to thank everybody for being here, um, staff, all the work that's been great done on this. Good job. We appreciate it. And, uh, let's adjourn. And what's great is we got it all done in one afternoon with 20 minutes to spare. You did great. Thanks again.
I, I, if you can hear me, thank you all. That was great. And all I can say is woo. Let's try not to, uh, bring more up.
Thanks, Sean. We weren't sure if you were still with us or not.
Oh, I was here.
Well, good. We appreciate it. See you later.
Thank you all.